All right, good morning, everybody. I'm going to call the order of the regular meeting for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners for April 20th at 10:00 a.m. Thank you all for joining us this morning. And with that, Mr. Salara, will you lead us in a salute to the flag? Please.
Hallelujah. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Assistant County Manager. All right. And with that, can I get a roll call? Madam Clerk.
Of course. Bob Lucy Chair.
Here.
Von Hartung Vice Chair.
Here.
Alexis Hill.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Janie Herman.
Here.
Eric Brown County Manager.
Here.
Nate Edwards Deputy DDA.
Present.
And I'm Jan Gallus, and you're County Clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, item three.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comments limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Madam Clerk, will you call public comment, please?
First up, we have Tracy Thomas, and she will be followed by Janet Butcher. While Tracy approaches the podium, I have a handout for her.
Okay. Ma'am, do you need the overhead? Ms. Thomas? Do you need the overhead, Ms. Thomas? Oh, perfect. There you go.
Thank you. Scripture tells us that 1 Timothy 6:12, that we are to fight a good fight. God has placed upon me certain wisdom, and with wisdom comes great responsibility. He has compelled me to share some of this wisdom with you. In consideration of responses given by the registrar and the deputy secretary of state at last week's meeting, here are a few more questions from Inquiring Minds. Do claims of no resources for verifying citizenship, why isn't citizenship being verified through vital statistic resources much like death records? Or why not use e-Verify, a United States Department of Homeland Security website that has been around since 1996 and operates in partnership with the Social Security Administration? What is the main function of boxes five and six on the state Nevada voter registration application? To claims that there are no statutes authorizing verification of citizenship, the deputy secretary's posture may be misguided. The first question on the application with the instruction not to complete it if the answer is no demonstrates citizenship as the primary qualification of a voter's identity. It is also the first qualification listed in NRS 293.485. I've provided several other statutes that confirm their duty to verify all information regarding a voter's identity, and nowhere does it state citizenship is to be exempt from the verification process. While it may be true, to the registrar's knowledge, our voting kiosks are not connected to the county's MiFi connections during early voting and election day the way the poll books are, what confirmation have actually been provided to verify the vendor isn't connecting to them without the county's knowledge? Are we really expected to blindly trust the vendor, much like we are supposed to trust non-citizens aren't completing voter registration forms? Especially in light of what is being revealed about this vendor in other states? Much like we have no idea what vendors are doing on our cell phones, there really is no absolute proof without access to the source code. As the saying goes, criminals aren't criminals until they are caught. Washoe County cannot afford to just stick its head in the sand. In regards to today's agenda item 6F, the commissioners may also want to consider Public Law 108-447, Section 111, which mandates all institutions, agencies, and departments receiving federal funds to conduct educational programs and/or training on the Constitution on September 17th each year. In my 17 years of employment with the county, I attended a lot of training, yet not once did I ever receive any training from the county on the Constitution. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Next up, we have Ms. Janet Butcher, followed by Ms. Cindy Martinez.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Butcher.
Good morning. As far as the proprietary software, as an IT professional, you could put somebody under oath and have them be able to review the software. I don't know if you have heard about the peer-reviewed study done by the Stanford University that demonstrates beyond a reasonable doubt that face masks have absolutely zero chance of preventing the spread of COVID-19. I bet you haven't. It was posted on the National Center for Biotechnological Information Government website. The NCBI is a branch of the National Institute for Health. So one would think such a study would be widely reported by the CDC and the mainstream media and embraced by the science-loving folks and/or governor. And if you want to verify that what I've just stated is true, it is at ncbi.nlm.nih.gov. Thank you. Oh, and by the way, tyranny under the guise of safety is still tyranny. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Cindy Martinez, followed by Mr. Kenji Otto.
Welcome, Ms. Martinez.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Lucy. Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Assistant District Attorney, Mr. Manager and Staff. Mr. Edwards, I don't know if you remember me. My supervisor and I met with you in a cheating case over the Silver Legacy. I'm since retired from the board, so it's nice to see you again, sir. That guy got away with it, by the way. I wanted to speak to what you're going to be voting on today, which is the COVID mitigation plan. And might I say is that the new plan looks the same as the old plan, and I object to it, and I encourage you to vote against it. We've asked you before to put a resolution on the agenda and remove this county of Washoe from the public health emergency. There is no public health emergency. CDC and WHO itself, WHO, has said that COVID coronavirus, SARS-CoV-2, is now moving into the endemic phase, so we're no longer in a pandemic. I did not have to step over dead bodies to get into the county building or into Walmart. The other thing I would say about your COVID-19 restrictions is that I found reference to the safety guidance for places of worship and the Calvary Chapel Dayton Valley Ninth Circuit Supreme Court decision conclusively stated that this county and this governor has absolutely no right and no authority to abridge the First Amendment rights of the faithful. The First Amendment is clear in its intent and scope, and we object to any kind of restriction of religious expression. And I would also like to say that I found this morning on social media is that Congress is extraordinarily busy these days. May I have the overhead, sir?
Yes. Can we get the overhead, please?
While we slept, Congress has written and submitted two bills, HR 1843 and Senate Bill 937, which says in pertinent part, the title is to facilitate the expedited review of COVID-19 hate crimes and for other purposes. So this is what the Marxists in Congress are busy doing. And we did not give the Washoe County Commission authority to turn your authority over to unelected bureaucrats, the county manager, the assistant county manager. Respectfully, they're clearly intelligent, educated, and informed people. We did not give the Board of Commissioners, County Commissioners, permission to cede their authority to unelected bureaucrats, and we repudiate their claimed authority over our constitutional rights conclusively. And in closing, if you do not act upon this, Bob Lucy and Von Hartung are the Neville Chamberlains of Washoe County and submit appeasement to the governor of the state.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Mr. Kenji Otto, followed by Ms. Catherine Snediger. And Ms. Martinez, if I could have the overhead that you put on the screen, if I can have the documents.
Welcome, Mr. Otto.
Good morning. So I'd like to first ask again that the security metal detector be removed. It's a bit annoying. I don't know. I'm asking the whole commission that it be removed, as well as that this farce with the masks be stopped. Item nine is, I realize that you have to adhere, try to work with or do something with Carson City. And if you are, then you are, but it's basically a farce. I've been going to retail outlets for the last couple of weeks, and none of them have mentioned one word to me about my not having a mask. So they're not enforcing it. And I've gone up and walked up to managers and assistant managers, and not one word. And it's my choice, my choice not to have a mask. I don't, I've got plenty of years, 20-plus years in the medical field, so I know what I'm doing. And so basically, and as far as, again, the reminder on the groups, if you're going to have a definition of a group, 16 and above would be appreciated, and not the children. Let's not make our children suffer any more than the government has already made them suffer. The poor kids are going stir crazy, and evidently the suicide rates amongst them are going up. I had a great talk with my grandson, and he's extremely confused by all of why people have, want him to, are wearing masks all over the place. And he's an extremely intelligent young man. So with that said, I appreciate your time, and I hope you make a good decision on item nine. I probably won't be here to hear the conclusion, but I will be listening on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Otto.
Next up, we have Ms. Catherine Snediger, followed by Ms. Melanie Sutton.
Good morning, Ms. Snediger.
Good morning. I'm a non-person, non-resident, unenfranchised, natural woman. Washoe County needs to open everything up right now. You, the commissioners, have purposely allowed this pandemic to continue for personal reasons since it's obvious there is no documented medical evidence to support this shutdown of our local economy. Most obvious benefit to each of you is to be able to conduct the county business in secret despite your oaths. Each of you has to accept responsibility for the facts that you jointly and severally have decimated tens of thousands of lives in this county. You have created a massive homeless problem because people were put out of work and could not make house or rent payments. You knowingly, willingly, and intentionally destroyed the county tax base that could only occur because each of you were benefiting in some other manner. You, the county commissioners, know or should have known SISLAC had only authority to issue an executive order that could affect the general public for 30 days. Each of you have known and understood executive orders only affect officers and employees. Thus, any game of reliance on SISLAC's illegal, unlawful, unconstitutional orders stretching out of these months were done in concert with SISLAC. This pandemic has gone on far too long. You forced 487,000-plus people to wear a mask that doesn't work and stand six feet apart. There is no tangible documented evidence that anyone actually died from COVID, none. This leads to the obvious question, how's that renowned garage parking, garage used for COVID people working out for you? You only need to understand there is documented evidence that has and is standing even after the county commission chair made a false claim of so many COVID deaths. You have damaged the children. You've deprived them of education, substandard as the Washoe County school system is, scholarships missed, senior ball sports, and socializing in general. Stop being intention and wanton lawbreakers. The governor is only allowed to shut down the area affected for 30 days by statute. Your attorney knows this, and I believe you know it too. And just to be sure, court units, a municipal agency can be held liable for acting under color of law and color of official right, and that's a Supreme Court decision. Your attorney might want to look up Gilmore versus City of Atlanta, and that whole case it shows. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snediger.
Next up, we have Ms. Melanie Sutton, followed by Ms. Kalen Sutton. And I do have a handout to distribute to the board from Ms. Sutton.
Good morning, Ms. Sutton.
Yes, so a couple of days ago, there was a study done from Stanford, which is definitely not a conservative college, which says masks do absolutely nothing, and it has actually an effect on people, adverse effect. So that's what's being handed out. Plus, I found a couple constitutions lying around to give to you. Just so you guys know, you guys are taking away our constitutional rights. So that is a formal notice. Okay. So also, I also want to say that I am praying for you guys to have the courage, the courage to stand up for the people that you are working for, the courage to allow us to be people, to allow us to live amongst each other in unity, because all the masks are doing is dividing us. I love all Americans. I love all Nevadans. I love everybody in my community. And what you're doing is dividing us. Because the masks, read the study, please. Because not only that, but a couple of months ago, the CDC came out and said that the masks were 2% effective. Like, read the science, you guys, because everything that you guys are doing is dividing us. I'm coming here every single week. I'm nobody. I'm a nothing. I'm nothing but a redneck. I probably have alfalfa on me from feeding my animals this morning. I'm nobody, but I'm still coming here, and I will stand up and fight for America and fight for our community as long as I can, fight for my children. I have four. I have a 23-year-old in the Navy who just got married, and then I also have a 17-year-old son that is in all AP and honors classes that I'm homeschooling, that is way smarter than me, but got to do it, right? Because I'm not going to force my child to wear a muzzle, you know? And then I have a 15-year-old in all honors classes that I have to homeschool as well. And I have my nine-year-old daughter here that wants to speak to you next on her own. She wanted to come. So this is what I do every Tuesday, so might as well allow her to come as well, too, right? She's going to do amazing, but she wrote it on her own. And I just ask you guys, and I pray, I'm praying for you all, to have the courage and see in your heart what this mask is doing to our community, our community. It's dying from within. It's rotting. It's rotting. And I have people calling me daily, saying what this is doing is isolating them, and they're in so much depression. And they're calling me because I met them on the street, asking for signatures for the petition.
Next up, we have Ms. Kalen Sutton.
Welcome, Ms. Sutton.
Hi, my name is Kalen Sutton, and I wanted to come here because I hope you listen to my word. I know you don't listen to my mom and dad's, but I hope you listen to mine. This took away over a year of my childhood. I want to go to school and help my friends if they're upset, but how do I do that if they're wearing a mask? How can I tell? Because most of their face is covered. So... And when I went to softball, if I got hurt, I used to help them, like if they got hit in the arm with a ball or something, I would help them. But, again, how could you tell if they're sad or hurt if they're wearing a mask? So I really hope this stops. Because it took, but I also want to ask a question. Why did the year get taken away? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton.
Next up, we have Mr. James Bentham.
Mr. Bentham. Good morning.
Good morning. James M. Bentham, for the record. I'm here, first of all, to talk about deaths in the United States. According to the CDC Morbidity and Mortality Report, Leading Causes and Factors, and Preventive Healthcare, between the ages of zero and 17 in 2020, I believe the number of deaths in this age group was 226 across the nation. So this would be, based on percentage-wise, a lot lower for Nevada. Then the question is, if there are more suicides in Washoe County than COVID deaths, why are the schools closed? Evidently, this is not based on science and mathematics. If it's not based on science and mathematics, politics and funding is involved. The schools should not have closed. Also, according to the CDC, the leading age group of deaths are those 65 and older. 81% of the deaths were over 65. If this is true, why then did we close the economy? We're basically talking about the retired group in the United States. During 2020, the leading cause of death, according to CDC, heart disease, 690,000 deaths, cancer essentially 600,000, COVID 345,000. Basically, there are four times the number of COVID deaths that involved heart disease and cancer. Where is the outrage among the doctors and the media in our country over this? We should be focusing on prevention and treatments that really work. On April 11th, health professionals have confirmed Florida's COVID-19 deaths have dropped down to single digits. California State reporting a triple-digit increase in COVID-19 deaths on April 11th. The state reported 105 deaths and almost 5,000 people positive to the virus. Florida has no statewide restrictions. The governor, Cisantis, has prohibited municipalities from finding people.
Thank you, Mr. Bentham.
Thank you.
That's everybody in chambers, so we'll go to Zoom, and we have Ann Marie Grant signed in.
Ms. Grant. Good morning, Ms. Grant.
Ann Marie Grant, for the record, sister of Thomas Purdy, murdered by Reno police, hard-tied, and then asphyxiated up at your Washoe County Jail as he begged and pleaded for his life, to no avail. I'd just like to mention that I'm watching the trial of George Floyd's murderer, Derek Chauvin, and I think your medical examiner is full of BS, saying that my brother died from excited delirium. There's six criteria out of 10 needed for excited delirium. My brother met one of them. He was sweaty, and you would be too if you had been hard-tied like a wild animal for 40-plus minutes, when you weren't hurting anybody, and all you did was ask for help. I think it's disgusting that Von Hartung is using his money to donate to SWAT when they get enough of the county taxpayer dollars. Do your job. Start following NRS 211.020 and protect the inmates. Goodbye.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Next up on Zoom, we have Dan Purdy.
Mr. Purdy?
Daniel Purdy, brother of Thomas Purdy, murdered at Washoe County Jail. I would also like to address that donation of $10,000 you'll be voting on later today. It just shows how out of touch with reality you must be to donate $10,000 in a time of COVID, when you could make a donation to your local church, possibly a food pantry, but those things are the last thing on your mind. Setting up a, looks like a R, I'm sorry, F4 robot for tactical purposes? I think that feeding people, making sure they have appropriate healthcare and education, that money could be spent somewhere else more appropriately. I implore upon you to deny that donation.
Thank you, Mr. Purdy.
Mr. Purdy, he's done. There's nobody else signed in.
All right. Seeing no further public comment, I will bring it back to the board. At this time, Mr. Manager, we are on to item four.
And county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
All right. Mr. Manager, do you have anything for us this morning?
Nothing this morning, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners? Vice Chairman?
So I'd actually like to respond to that. The robot that I'm donating to is a non-lethal alternative. It saves lives, and when they have no-knock warrants, it helps people in crisis. So instead of sending in the SWAT team, they send in a robot. This is to stand down the aggression that could possibly take place in those no-knock warrants. It's, in my mind, this is one of those things that will ultimately save somebody's life, both citizens and police officers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners, anybody else? All right. Seeing them, we will close then and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, we are on to item five. This is a presentation.
Yes, item five is a presentation by Jeremy Smith, Executive Director of the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, Aditya Nair, Assistant Professor, Aerospace Engineering at the University of Nevada Reno, and Dr. Bayo Curry Winchell, Medical Director, St. Mary's Urgent Care, to provide an overview of the Truckee Meadows COVID Risk Meter.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thank you very much for this opportunity today to talk to you about the COVID Risk Meter. We have a short presentation that I will try to share up right now. Get started. Okay, can you see the presentation screen?
We can, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Truckee Meadows COVID Risk Meter, we're going to talk today about our approach to trying to simplify messaging to the community about COVID. Initially, a team was formed by the city of Reno to bring together experts across a broad spectrum of fields related to public health, and that included medical doctors, ER docs, health professionals, the hospital administrators, folks from REMS that were there. We have representation from elected officials, the school district, the health district, data scientists. We also had a Master of Public Health student, Jack Hester, who really helped quite a bit with some of the coding on this thing. And the goal was really to create, and I think try and help push in the right direction with all the great work that was already going on in response to the COVID pandemic, which has been obviously an unprecedented and incredibly difficult thing to negotiate, and sure appreciate everyone's efforts, but it was an overwhelming thing. And so our idea was to help by providing a data synthesis of daily data that simplified the messaging around this concept of a gauge. And so that's what you have here on the screen. If you go to the covidriskmeter.org website, you'll encounter these images. So the first thing you see is a sort of a speedometer-esque gauge that has the weekly rating. That's based on the previous seven days of daily model score. So each day, we bring in information, and I'm about to show you the sources of that information, but put that together into a synthesis using some programming language stuff. But put that together into a synthesis using some programming language stuff we've written, and it kicks out a daily score, and we monitor those. And then every Monday, based on data coming in from over the weekend, we update that setting. And in fact, Dr. Nair will talk about how, at that time, we also do a prediction for the upcoming week. Each of the colors, green through purple, have associated guidelines for personal behavior. The concept behind this tool was, it's always been informational. These guidelines have never had any sort of weight in terms of enforcement. They're just, this whole thing is to empower people to make decisions that they feel are right for them and that make them feel safe. Okay, so that's what you would find when you go there. Here are the five data streams feeding into the meter. And this all comes together to create that daily score and ultimately the weekly setting. The first is COVID risk assessments that are received by the Washoe County Health District in advance of a test. And so in working with the Health District, we thought that would be a good early warning, a component to this, kind of a leading indicator. Test positivity is another measure that, obviously, has been used by the governor's team and is an important measure of how well we're doing in terms of testing in the community. And then, of course, the spread of the disease as well, although that is really better captured even by number three, new cases daily. We're getting this information from risk assessments from the Health District. The test positivity measure comes directly from the Department of Health and Human Services from the state. We get our new case daily information from the Washoe County COVID-19 Impact Dashboard. That's been a fantastic tool. I think it's been incredibly helpful. And then we have two other data streams, four and five, which talk about medical interventions and also hospital capacity. So the Nevada Hospital Association collects statistics from the hospitals on a daily basis. We have an understanding of how many folks are in the hospital with COVID, how many are in the ICU with COVID, and then what are our overall staffed hospital bed and ICU bed capacities looking like. These five data streams come together. They can each score between zero and three points. So the highest possible model score you could get would be a 15, and that would be in the purple. We have a methodology doc on the site that you can read in detail about the parameterization of the model and where the class breaks exist for each of those data indicators. Those have been based either on monitoring the data. You know, early on, it was difficult because this was a novel thing, but there were some trusted sources, like Harvard's Global Institute of Health. So we adopted some of their parameterization. We talked with the hospital administrators and the medical professionals to try to tune these parameters so that we, you know, we did a good job of tracking what was important in tracking the risk. And so that's available, if you want to delve in on that, at that methodology doc. But generally, the meter basically works like this. We have these several colors that it can be set to, and it's a question of each day how the scores break down. So, for example, yellow number two, a daily score of greater than three or less than or equal to five. You can kind of see here how each day has performed, and that then informs how we set that gauge. And so it's a pretty simple approach once we get the data in daily. It was a bit of a effort to make sure we had all of the best data coming in in terms of, you know, those official data sources, but everybody really collaborated in a very positive way to bring this information to you. Okay, I just wanted quickly, before we go to Dr. Nair, and you can talk about the prediction element, talk a little bit about how the models performed since, basically, June 1, when we started tracking this stuff. And I think what you can see is there's a big spike. In this, we're looking at, the orange line is the risk assessments, a 14-day average of those risk assessments received. And the blue background is the overall daily scoring of the risk meter. And obviously, when the blue line is higher, that means the risk meter's scoring up into the red or towards the purple. It never actually hit the purple. And so what you can see, though, I think here, is that the surge that happened around Christmas and Thanksgiving in the winter, you know, first signal we picked up was this risk assessment signal, really was a leading indicator. Then if we move on to cases, you can see that the risk assessments presaged the case spike as well. And so the risk meter did a good job of tracking high values during that case spike as well. And finally, didn't begin to descend until we got past the hospitalization spike, which was a couple of weeks after that spike in late November of total cases. And so we feel that the risk meter has done a good job of tracking these pieces as it was designed to do, and I think it's done a good job of communicating simply to the community where we're at in terms of COVID conditions in the region. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Aditya Nair, who can talk about the prediction element of the tool.
Yeah. Thanks a lot, Jeremy. I appreciate it. So, and thank you all for listening. So I joined this team in October, and during that time, Jeremy and the team had set up really good metrics for prediction. And the idea was to use these metrics for forecasting the risk up to seven days in the future. So that was the intention with this, with the kind of piece of the puzzle, which is to do the risk meter prediction so that we can get some idea of what the upcoming risk is for the week. Also, the other benefit out of having a model for the prediction is we can see how these various variables or indicator variables interact with each other, and that is a very important, you know, clue to, you know, why we are seeing the surges that we are seeing. So here on the left is, if you go to the covidriskmeter.org website, you will see, you know, there'll be a button where you can see about the next week's risk prediction. And again, we have the same levels as Jeremy was mentioning, as to low, moderate, high, very high, and severe. And we give you a predicted risk over the course of the next seven days, basically. So all the meter, the prediction meter needs is the data currently. For example, on Monday, if I have the data, I feed that to the model, and it'll give me a predicted score from Tuesday all the way to next, you know, Monday. So, and that's why, that's how we've been doing on a week-by-week basis. And again, we update the next week based on what the value is, risk meter value is on Monday. And again, we show what these risk scores are going to do. So on the right, I'm just showing you, like, the model that we are using. So these are data, the same indicator variables that Jeremy was discussing stacked over in time. And we, of course, do some technical computation of basis functions, and we build this model based on regression. Jeremy, if you can go to the next slide. So, so one of the things that we were able to really, you know, predict well is, you know, why these surges were happening. For example, the surge that happened from the week of 15th to 20th December. So you can see on the left is the blocks are the true scores, and the dotted blue one is the only data that was available to the model. And the red dots are the one that we predicted based on the meter. And this is not only, you know, validation of the predicted model, but also kind of validation of the choice of the variables that is in the risk meter. So you can see that the, that each of these indicators, to some degree, were predicted pretty accurately in terms of trends. And you can see on the right also showing you, you know, how the risk score, the aggregate risk score, was going from, you know, very high 1 to a very high 2 category. And that was also reflected by, actually, the true data, which we only got the following week of, you know, of this data collection. So, and you can see, you know, the major cause was this total ICU bed use being increasing and it crossing this 80% threshold mark, which we indicated as something that would increase the score by .5. So you can see that that is reflective of what is happening with the predicted model as well as the true data. And though the risk assessment is going down, we have compensation in terms of, you know, how the hospitals are getting burdened, and that is what is being reflected here. Jeremy, if you can go to the next slide, please. And this is just showing you a picture of, you know, that was December, and you, you know, showing you one week worth metric, but how we've been doing overall over a period of time. And this is data aggregated for January and February, the true, you know, the true data in blue again, and the predicted scores in red. And you can see that we are really able to, you know, predict most of the trends in terms of what the risk is going to be in the following week, whether it is going to go down, whether it is going to go up. Apart from minor deviations from the true curve, we've been able to model this, you know, or forecast the risk pretty accurately, I would say. So you can see, in January, we were in the very high 1, and we came down to the high 2 regime. In February, we were in, you know, high 1, and then we went, we kind of came down to the lower end of the high 1 regime. And if you go to the next slide, and you can see in March is where we started, you know, starting these, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, no problem. So in March is when we started seeing the model, you know, rise from this moderate 2 level back to the high 1 level, and then, you know, we start seeing these big kind of oscillations. And in April, you can see that we are still kind of stuck in this high 1 level, and we would like to be in the moderate 2, and then, you know, hopefully go towards moderate 1. But hopefully, this is giving you a good idea of the full picture of not only how well the indicator variables are as a metric in terms of assessing the risk to the community, but also, hopefully, you know, how we can predict this and forecast it up to a week. And if you can go to my final slide is, just to show where we are heading. I mean, this is, again, a weekly forecast. We've not yet reached kind of 24th April. So of course, this is the forecast for the week. We are still seeing that we are going to be in this high 1. We are initially going to see a little bit of a spike and then go back down. But we are going to update this on a week-per-week basis. Hopefully, we can go down to moderate 2 and moderate 1 levels where, you know, we can manage the system in terms of the overall burden. Thanks, Jeremy, for your, I'll leave it to you for our final closing.
Thank you, Aditya. At this point, I'd like to call on Dr. Bayo Curry-Winchell, who's been joining us from the medical perspective, and I think can offer her thoughts in terms of how the risk meter is done and just generally thoughts about how we've handled the pandemic.
Thank you, Jeremy, for having me, and I want to thank everyone on this panel for having me. My name's Dr. Curry-Winchell, and I'm working on the front lines treating COVID patients as well as seeing patients in the aftermath when they're having sequelas and certain kind of long-lasting effects. In respect to the COVID meter, I joined the group, I believe it was in November, December, and I wanted to bring a perspective on what I'm seeing in the clinic. And so I can tell you, one thing that has been amazing with the meter, it has been on target with what I'm seeing in the clinic as well as in the hospital. Not only does it include hospitalizations, it includes the number of cases, and it really provides a more robust kind of picture of what we're seeing in the community. And as Jeremy mentioned, it's not for enforcement. It's more of a guidance for our community to make their informed decision on what they would like to do, whether going out to a restaurant or, you know, being in a group. It really provides information on how many cases we are seeing. So I just wanted to shine a light on a healthcare perspective and how it has really helped me because it has been on target. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Dr. Curry-Winchell. With that, that concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I do appreciate you guys, everybody participating this morning and giving us that overview of the risk meter. Are there questions from the commissioners right now? Commissioner Hill?
Well, thank you for this presentation. I think it was really helpful because I don't know how many people in the community understand how important this resource is. So I want to figure out how we can better promote it and ensure that it's out there. And thank you for everyone's hard work. I'm just awed by how much time you put into this over the last year. And I would ask, is this going to be in the ownership of the Health District eventually? That's what I had been hearing. And then how are we going to ensure that all this data continues to get uploaded after that? Because I want y'all to return back to your day jobs because you've committed so much volunteer, I'm assuming, time to this, so thank you.
Great questions. Thank you very much for that. This is Jeremy Smith for the record. Yeah, I forgot to mention that. Thanks for bringing that up. We have been in the process of transitioning the ownership and the maintenance of the meter to the Health District. Health District staff have been aware of the meter and been helping to advise us all along. And realistically, it's just been a person-power kind of a situation where, I mean, the Health District has been overwhelmed during this pandemic. And so we were really just all hands on deck trying to help, but we recognize that the appropriate place for this is with the Health District. And so we're happy to share that over there. And of course, we're not going anywhere, so we're here to help to make sure that the data remain consistently available and continue to advise, and, you know, Aditya will continue to help with the prediction element. So we're not going away. We're just, I think, trying to put it in the appropriate place, appropriate hands.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Vice Chairman Hartung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Smith, my question is, and perhaps I missed it. Are you using the data from the One Water Innovation Institute on the wastewater samples that they're taking?
Jeremy Smith for the record. No, we're not actually incorporating that data into the model. That data were not, those data were not available at the time when we constructed it. But I have been in communications with Chris Nopagia and his graduate students. In fact, I'm sitting on a defense committee this Thursday for Blaga Dillik, who's been doing some geospatial aspects to the sampling that they did. So we're definitely well aware of their work, and we've brought it in, you know, as an ancillary piece to talk through when we've had these meetings, but it's not directly a part of the risk meter model.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Commissioner John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what area would you say is covered with this data? Is it just Washoe County? Is it just the city jurisdictions? What area can you claim to have some reliability of this code? Whom are we speaking to? What is the jurisdiction?
Sure. Excellent question. It's generally the Truckee Meadows area. So most of the data are for Washoe County. The risk assessment data would be for, you know, from the Health District, so for the county. Test positivity is also for Washoe County as a whole. The cases come from the COVID-19 dashboard, also the county. With the Nevada Hospital Association, we are using what's called the North Region. And that was based on advice from the Nevada Hospital Association staff. And they talked about the hospital ecosystem for our area. Where if we use Washoe County, that would include, you know, healthcare and incline, but that realistically, our system works more in terms with Carson Tahoe. And so the North Region includes all the major hospitals down here in the Truckee Meadows and Carson Tahoe, and that's the region that we've used.
I have another question about that. So this is very vague in general and has some time lag. Is there any plan with this group or with the Health District or with the county or regional planning to use wastewater samples to more target and be surgical in our areas so that we can actually get a hold of flare-ups like we've been instructed? This will be more like hotspots and forest fires? Because this is all very, very vague in general as a whole region, but there's no way for us to pinpoint, it seems like, an actual outbreak and what that might, what those boundaries might be, correct? And do you plan on going more surgical vis-à-vis if the wastewater study and the wastewater samples can be taken down to such a local level? Do we know about that? Because this, I think we're moving forward now to where we need to be surgical and precise in shutting down potential hotspots. And do, is there any movement? Or are you waiting for us or for UNR to find something more surgical than the tests, the actual COVID tests, where we could essentially target this, be surgical, as I said earlier? Are there any plans with that, or is that outside of what your scope is?
I think, Commissioner, that's, I think, outside the scope of what we set out to do with the risk meter, which was designed to be fairly general and to just give a simplified messaging for risk. But I absolutely agree with you that, you know, and we'd be, I think we'd be all be happy to help to try to work towards implementing the wastewater tracking in a way that can be more surgical. I think that's a really good idea. I know that, you know, none of these measures are perfect, and there are some limitations with the wastewater study as well, as I understand it. But it's also done a very good job of, you know, tracking that initial surge. So we don't have plans to sort of, you know, lead that charge, but we're happy to assist. And I think it's a very good idea.
I'd like to state on this record that I do expect the District Board of Health to come back with some, to whoever my rep is for here, to come back with the mitigation plans of surgical and precise ways to not revisit community spread and to be able to keep it. I believe that's the Board of Health's job, and I'd like to see what that will be and how this region, our region, our regional government, the government of the region, can assist in doing precisely that, precision surgical addressing of what will be flare-ups inevitably. And so I really want to make- And so I, I really want to make sure that we have that ready to go, even after we finish with this plan for 30 days. More importantly, what happens next? So I, I'm looking forward to more of that and I appreciate all of the big thinkers in the room for this. And I, I believe one of those big thinkers is the wastewater experts and they need to be in some way brought in. I know it's difficult with town and gown and, you know, what's proprietary and what, how much they want to give us information, but ultimately, that is going to be how we get back to better than normal because we'll be able to have a lot more management and options rather than blanket statements and blanket data. So I'm really looking forward to the data to move a lot further and a lot faster and a lot more precise. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. And I'm happy to carry that back to the, the health district for you. All right. Mr. Smith, we do appreciate it. Thank you for giving us this presentation today. As very, as all the commissioners have pointed out, this is very important to us as it is part of our county control plan. And so that discussion is prudent at this time. So thank you very much. All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This item is just for, for discussion only. Well, it doesn't list that way. Actually, it's not. It's, it's actually for, doesn't have it listed, but I have it on my agenda that way. Yeah. So we're not taking any action on this and so, but I will call for public comment just to be safe. Is there a public comment on this item?
There's nobody signed in.
All right. Seen done. All right. Seen done. We will move on to our proclamations. So what I want to do first is I'm going to have Commissioner Hill, she's going to present item six A today and also item six E. So I'm going to have her do both of those and then we'll, we'll kind of jump around here for the proclamations, but Commissioner Hill will be reading six A first. Yes. Mr. Manager, can you take us into item six A, sir?
Item six A is a proclaim, proclaim April 2021 as National Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month.
All right. And I believe we, we were going to have Mr. Gustafson from, in chambers with us today.
Right.
But I don't see him here with us.
Not here.
Is he, is he on Zoom? Okay. Mr. Gustafson is on Zoom. So with that, Commissioner Hill?
Washoe County, Nevada proclaims, whereas the Human Services Agency Children's Service Division remains devoted to the well-being of our children by ensuring they live in a safe, secure, and healthy community. And whereas in fiscal year 2020, 6,074 reports of child abuse and/or neglect were made to the Human Services Agency. The agency's top priority is the protection of children. HSA works diligently to preserve family strengths by providing biological parents with assistance needed to promote nurturing homes, keeping children safe, and preserving the family unit. And whereas in fiscal year 2020, the Human Services Agency reunited 236 children with their families, multifaceted, intensive, family-centered support and services were implemented to help build on family engagement and connections, ensuring children return home to a safe and stable environment. And whereas April is nationally recognized as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month, every April, HSA joins the national effort to raise awareness during the first week of April by placing hundreds of blue pinwheels outside of several Washoe County buildings. The pinwheels represent the joyful, carefree childhood every child deserves. And whereas, the public is encouraged to join the national effort by wearing blue clothing or ribbon during this month of April. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does proclaim April 2021 as National Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month to raise awareness about child abuse and assist families in need of support dated this 20th day of April 2021, signed by our Chairman, Bob Lucy.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Mr. Gustafson?
Yes.
How are you today?
Good morning. Great. I, I just wanted to say thank, thank you to Commissioner Hill. Thank you, commissioners. We, we all know that children are spending more time at home because of COVID-19 and are really more susceptible to these neglect because of that. So we encourage everyone to have a heightened awareness during this difficult time to ensure the safety of, of our most vulnerable in this community. If the community suspects child abuse or neglect, we ask that they call 833-900-SAFE and join our efforts in raising awareness by taking a picture, wearing blue during the month of April and publish on social media using hashtag pinwheels for prevention. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gustafson. All right. Well, thank you, Commissioner Hill. Commissioner, will you take us into item, or Mr. Manager, take us into item six E, please?
Six E is to proclaim the month of May as National Bike and Bicycle Safety Month and Washoe County Bike Month.
All right. Commissioner Hill, I believe with, with us, joining us today from the Truckee Meadows Bike Alliance, Kai Plaskin and also MJ Cloud will both be joining us via Zoom.
Wonderful. This one is near and dear to my heart. Washoe County, Nevada proclaims, whereas promoting alternative forms of transportation such as bicycling helps to improve health and well-being while reducing emissions, traffic congestion, and America's dependence on fossil fuels. And whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve quality of life by fostering community spirit, improving traffic safety, and stimulating economic growth. And whereas bicycle infrastructure in the Truckee Meadows offers great potential and opportunities to positively impact our recreation and tourism industry by making the region attracted to residents, visitors, and new incoming businesses who enjoy healthy lifestyles and the outdoors. And whereas Nevadans will experience the joys and benefits of bicycling during the month of May through educational and safety programs, community events, or ongoing for individual or group rides. And whereas the education of our entire community on the proper and safe operation of motor vehicles and bicycles sharing of the use of streets is important to ensure the safety and respect of all users on Nevada's roadways. And whereas the month of May has been declared National Bike Month since 1956. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2021 as National Bike and Safety Month and Washoe County Bike Month, encouraging all visitors and residents to enjoy the benefits of bicycling, recognizing the importance of bicycle safety, and showing the mutual respect and awareness of cyclists and motor vehicles on our streets. Dated this 20th day of April 2021 by our Chairman, Bob Lucy.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Is Cloud, Mr. Plaskin, are you there? Kai? Oh, Kai, there. Kai's in the McChambers with us. I'm sorry. Kai, come on down. I didn't even notice. Sorry. I apologize.
Kai, you have to go.
Yeah, we were told you were going to be here. Just kidding. Just kidding.
I have to go outside, go find a computer. I think I have one with me. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Kai, I'm so sorry. Thank you.
I am new with the Truckee Meadows Bicycle Alliance. Again, my name is Kai Plaskon and I wanted to thank you, Chair and Commissioners, for having us here. I, I had like a 20 paragraph speech to read, but I cut it down to three. So I hope you don't mind. I, I wanted to thank our board that is joining us via Zoom at the moment. They're a diverse group of technology, university, local business, Patagonia, infrastructure experts, and even construction. So thank you for supporting Bike Month. And if you haven't heard of micro mobility, you can raise your hand. Have you heard of micro mobility, any of you? It's new to me, too. I've ridden my bike, but I hadn't heard about this. And, and it's a new kind of buzz term that's being used and includes everything, not just bikes, but scooters and one-wheels and electric skateboards. And they're really neat. And some studies show that each one of these little things leads to $1,800 a year in economic impact. So the more of these that we can bring in and whatever it is that we need to do, bringing in more of these would, would be good for our economy. So, you know, safety is a huge factor in that. And that's what we're here to do is to work with everyone to promote safety and improve it because that's going to bring more of these folks out regardless of what they're riding. Bike Month proclamations are great and Bike Month itself is, is fantastic, but we've got to take stock of where we are, our progress, our challenges, and, and it reminds us that we all need to be on the same page in terms of micro mobility. How much economic impact is it going to have? How safe is it out there? And I'm hoping that Commissioners will invite us back during the month of May to give a safety presentation. So that concludes my speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plaskin. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I also note that, in fact, I was there this weekend. Kiwanis has a great selection of bikes at a very reasonable rate. They're over off of Mill Street. They're just east of Edison. And it's a, it, it goes to a great cause. They rehab these bikes and they, they have amazing deals. So I would, I highly recommend people get over and, and see what they have.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, Chairman. Next, we will have, I'm going to have Commissioner Jung present items six B and six F today. So, Mr. Manager, if you'll take us into item six B, please?
Six B is to proclaim the week of April 24, 2021 as National Crime Victims Rights Month.
Fantastic. And as Commissioner Jung is approaching the, the podium, I believe we have our DA, Mr. Chris Hicks with us. It's always nice to see another elected here in the, in the chambers with us. Welcome, Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to proclaim that whereas the victims' rights movement has resulted in the passage of laws at the local, state, and federal levels that have established essential rights for crime victims. Whereas since the passage of the Victims of Crime Act of 1984 and through the dedicated work of prosecutors, law enforcement, lawmakers, victim advocates, and service providers, there is a growing array of services and resources available to victims and their loved ones. Whereas in 2018, the voters in Nevada enacted the Victims Bill of Rights in our state constitution, which further the ways in which a victim may participate meaningfully throughout the criminal justice process. Whereas crime victims are best served when all are appropriately educated about victims' rights. Whereas supporting victims of crimes is crucial to the U.S. justice system because our support honors the experiences of victims and allows them to find autonomy and empowerment through achieving self-defined goals. Whereas being a victim of crime and navigating the criminal justice system can be a frightening and confusing experience, we must help victims assess the justice, assistance, and support they need to rebuild their lives. Whereas advocacy by and for victims of crime is itself a form of seeking justice, no less than the justice sought by prosecutors in the courts on behalf of victims. Whereas our community is determined to respond to crime and April 18 through the 24th of 2021 as National Crimes Victims Rights Week, signed by our Fair Chair, Mr. Bob Lucy. And here to accept this proclamation is our District Attorney, Mr. Chris Hicks. Right? I said it right? I never want to call you right, the right name. I don't know what that is. Have you stuck with something else? Mr., this is our elected Law of the Land who makes sure that you, as a victim, your rights are upheld and that you find justice. And so we're very honored to have you here with us today to, to accept this. And the wisdom of the voters of the whole state, as I mentioned in 2018, made sure that we put it in our constitution that victims have more access to meaningful changes into their experience of being victimized in our society. So, Mr. District Attorney, would you like to say a few words?
I thank you, Commissioner Jung, and thank you, Commissioners. This is such an important proclamation and it's an important week really for our community but all across the country to nationally recognize what it's like to be a crime victim. It's a week where we can honor crime victims, recognize what they've been through, we can support them, we can reaffirm our commitment to making sure that crime victims are treated with respect and dignity that they so deserve. So I'm, I'm going on my 19th year as a prosecutor. And in that timeframe, I've had the pleasure of working with countless victims of crime across all demographics, from children to elderly and with some, involving some very serious crimes. And what I've learned in that 19-year span is just how difficult being the victim of a crime is. And that's why this week is so important. Victims of crime have to deal with just the fact that they're a victim, the trauma that comes with that and some oftentimes devastating, life-altering types of crimes. And then on top of that, they have to travel through the criminal justice system, which can be challenging. It takes time, oftentimes years, and it can be confusing, it can be challenging, and they're doing that while they're trying to overcome their experience, their trauma that brought them there in the first place. And so this recognition, this commitment by the board and is so important. It shows that we care about our crime victims in this community, which I know we do. And so I thank you very much for signing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DA. Appreciate it. You're going to take a picture with us afterwards. So don't lose it. You want to read that? Sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, it's okay. Thank you.
Law Day. Okay. So item six F?
Six F, sir.
Is proclaim May 1, 2021 as Law Day.
All right then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Manager. So whereas the rule of law is a fundamental concept upholding justice, freedom, and representative government, and whereas the rule of law has been a guiding ideal of constitutional government that can be traced through the history from various systems of law through the Magna Carta and the United States Constitution. And whereas the United States was founded on the principle that voluntary adherence to the rule of law expands rather than limits the opportunities for freedom. And whereas the rule of law rests upon the idea that no person is so important as to be above the law, and conversely, no person is so significant, insignificant to be beneath the law. And whereas the principle that no person is above the law means that there must be limits on government and the government officials must be held accountable for their actions. Whereas the separation of powers among branches of the government are essential to preserving the rule of law. And whereas, an independent judiciary is essential to a free society and administration of laws. And whereas, a viable democracy requires understanding of the nature and basis of our freedoms and recognition of the individual responsibilities which those freedoms impose. And whereas, the rule of law requires an educated citizenry that understands law and demonstrates engaged citizenship. And whereas, the theme for Law Day 2021 is advancing the rule of law now, encouraging all of us to fulfill our responsibilities to protect our communities and our democracy. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 1, 2021 as Law Day. And we urge everyone to observe this day by deepening their understanding of the rule of law and dedicating themselves to advancing the rule of law now to strengthen our democracy, defend liberty, and pursue justice. Signed by our Chairman, Bob Lucy. And I believe somebody might be on Zoom from the Law Library?
Yes, I think we might have Ms. Emily Reed.
Hi, yes, I am here. And I believe you also have Ms. Sarah Bates, who is our Law Librarian.
Marvelous. Welcome, Ms. Reed.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Young and our Board of County Commissioners for proclaiming May 1 as Law Day. Working at the District Court, we see how important and impactful the rule of law is every day. This year, it's my pleasure to introduce Sarah Bates, our Law Librarian. Sarah has been with the Washoe County Law Library since June of 2019. She's worked tirelessly to increase our digital services over the past year and to offer a lawyer-in-the-library program virtually. I'm excited to turn things over to her so she can tell you about our event for Law Day. The Law Library has been planning with the Northern Nevada Women's Lawyers Association. And I don't know if we're able to get Sarah on. I'm here.
You're welcome.
Hi, Sarah Bates, Law Librarian. Commissioners, thank you so much for this important proclamation. In honor of Law Day, the Washoe County Law Library is partnering with the Northern Nevada Women Lawyers Association to hold a special large-scale lawyer-in-the-library program on Law Day, Saturday, May 1, from 10 to 1. Participants will be able to speak to a volunteer attorney for up to 20 minutes. And we'll have attorneys that specialize in family law, landlord/tenant law, bankruptcy and foreclosures, stealing criminal records, probate law, and general civil law. The program is completely free and will be virtual using Zoom. Signups are available on the Law Library's website at washecourts.com/lawlibrary. And you can also call the Law Library for questions. We have lots of spots available. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Jung and Ms. Bates and Ms. Reed. We do have- We do appreciate that, and we will get to your proclamation. All right, next, Mr. Manager, we will go to item 6C.
Item.
Vice Chairman Hartung will read that for us.
Okay. Item 6C is to proclaim April 30th, 2021, as National Therapy Animal Day.
Vice Chairman, I believe today we have Jamie Baxter joining us via Zoom.
On Zoom, okay.
Yes.
You know, before we get started with this, and I'm glad we listed this as animal therapy, not just dogs. When our daughter was extremely sick and we were trying to get her to transplant, we had a pet rabbit. And it was a feral rabbit that our kids caught. I thought that it would live for maybe two or three years. I was wrong. It lived for nearly 15 years. It was a free range in our home. It was the only thing that our daughter found that would comfort her as we were trying to get her to transplant. So it was really quite an amazing relationship that they had. So, whereas, there are thousands of therapy animal teams serving in communities across the United States, and whereas Pet Partners has designated April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day, and whereas, therapy animal teams in Washoe County play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human-animal bond, and whereas, therapy animal teams make millions of visits per year in settings such as hospital, nursing homes, schools, and hospice, and whereas, therapy animal teams interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students facing literacy challenges, and those approaching end of life. And whereas, those, these exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021, as National Therapy Animal Day in Washoe, in Washoe County, and encourages our citizens to celebrate our therapy animals and their human handlers. Further, the Board publicly salutes the service of therapy animal teams in our community and in communities across the nation, dated this 20th day of April, 2021, and it's signed by the hand of our Chairman, Bob Lucy.
Welcome. Wonderful, thank you. Jean, and Ms. Baxter, are you with us via Zoom? We don't see her. Okay. All right, looks like we didn't grab that one. So with that, Mr. Manager, will you read us into item 6D, please?
Item 6D is to proclaim the month of May, 2021, as ALS Awareness Month.
And our Vice Chairman will take.
Do we have anyone joining us?
We do, and possible for via Zoom. It's either Ms. April Masluka or Lisa Tomlin Kerr.
Anyone, hopefully? Okay.
All right.
You know, a few years ago, before, and Commissioner Jung, I know you were there, and I think it was before Commissioner Herman and Commissioner Lucy and Commissioner Hill with the ice water challenge, where we, ice bucket challenge. Thank you, which we participated in. And at that time, my wife and I adopted an ALS family, as a matter of fact, down in Carson City, and so it was, it's a devastating disease to watch. It's just heartbreaking. But I know that we're making some good strides these days. The proclamation, whereas, it is the policy and pleasure of the Washoe County Board of Commissioners to recognize and honor those organizations that seek to protect and enhance the quality of life for these less fortunate, and whereas, amyotrophic lateral sclerosis, ALS, sometimes called Lou Gehrig's Disease, is rapidly progressive, invariably fatal, an invariably fatal neurological disease that attacks the nerve cells or the neurons responsible for controlling voluntary muscles. It does not affect the person's ability to see, smell, taste, hear, or recognize, touch. And whereas, as many as 20,000 people in the United States have ALS, and an estimated 6,000 people in the United States are diagnosed with the disease each year, approximately 250 persons living in Nevada are currently diagnosed with ALS. And whereas, every 90 minutes, someone in the United States is diagnosed and passes away from ALS. And whereas, military veterans are twice as likely to develop ALS as those that haven't served in the military. And whereas, in the advanced stages, ALS can cost up to $200,000 a year, depleting the financial resources of patients, resources, it's supposed to be resources of patients and their relatives. And whereas, the suffering of patients and anguish of their caregivers must be supported and alleviated. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2021 as ALS Awareness Month, and urges all citizens within Washoe County to join us in honoring and supporting the ALS Association Nevada Chapter, a worthwhile and dedicated organization. It's dated this 20th day of April, 2021, and again, signed by our Chairman's hand, Bob Lucy.
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Chairman. I don't believe we were able to grab anybody from the ALS, but we do thank them for their participation. Wish them well this week.
And those are in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. So I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second from Commissioner Herman. These are for action, so I will ask if we have any public comment on any of these items? Madam Clerk?
On item 6, let's see. Looks like they need to re-sign back in. We do have Ann Marie Grant to speak.
All right. Ms. Ann Marie Grant?
She dropped off the line.
Did she? All right, we don't, I don't see we have any, so if we have none, Madam Clerk, do we have any or no?
Let's see. Hang on. Double-click on 6C. Sorry, technical difficulties here.
Madam Clerk? All right.
I don't see anybody signed in. I have MJ Cloud.
MJ Cloud on Zoom? All right. Ms. Cloud?
Good afternoon, Chair Lucy and Board of Commissioners. I appreciate all the support over the years you've given for the Safe Routes to School Program, and having Bike Month being proclaimed and supported by Washoe County is, again, very much appreciated. I put in the question and answer. I apologize that my connection failed exactly when I was supposed to speak. So I wanted to make sure that the complete board was invited to join all of the Washoe County schools that will be participating in any bike events during the week of Bike Week and Bike Month. If you'd like any more information, you can email me and you can always call myself. I'm looking forward to three different schools in the Washoe County areas, or four different schools in the Washoe County areas that will have bike events planned, and if you're not able to ride a bike, being at the school and welcoming the students in that are riding and giving those safety messages out and support would be greatly appreciated.
All right. Ms. Cloud, thank you so much for joining us this morning. I do appreciate this. Appreciate you coming and participating in this. It's nice to hear your voice. All right, I have now Ann Marie Grant signed in on item 6B. Ms. Grant?
Ann Marie Grant, for the record, I'm speaking on items 6B and 6F. Victims deserve rights in Washoe County, just not if you're a victim and the perpetrator is law enforcement. What a slap in the face to have DA Chris Hicks objecting to proclamation. My brother was a victim, but not in Hicks's eyes. No review of any of the three asphyxiation deaths. Were they not victims just because it was law enforcement who killed them? Law Day, nobody should be above the law, I agree, including law enforcement. To this day, 18-year-old Makai Lee's family is harassed by Sparks Police, victimized over and over again. Are they already killed his brother? It's not enough to take their loved one, they have to keep victimizing. It would be nice if people who are victims of law enforcement had some rights in Washoe County. Advocacy for victims is important, I agree. Thus, me calling for the last four years urging you all to do your jobs. You have the power to protect those people who are your community members and your constituents, somebody's loved ones that sit up at par. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. All right, seeing no further public comments, signed in. I'll bring it back to the Board. I do have a motion and a second for these items. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously with all Commissioners voting. All right, Mr. Manager, it's actually, we're on to donations. And so with that, Mr. Vice Chair, will you read in the donations for us today?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The donations, recommendation to accept a donation of $2,515.25 from various businesses and organizations and individuals for regional parks and open space programs and facilities, and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the appropriate budget amendments. Item 7B1 is to retroactively accept a donation from the Grace Community Church, a nonprofit religious organization to the Washoe County Human Services Agency in the amount of $100,000 to provide housing and rental assistance and family, to families and clients, and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments. That is the Human Services Agency. Item 7B2 is recommendation, one, to acknowledge various items donated totaling an estimate market value of $873; two, accept donations from various donors to Washoe County Human Services Agency Child Protective Services Fund to support welfare activities in the amount of $816.25, retroactive for the period of January 21, 2021, through March 20, 2021, and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments. That is the Human Services Agency. 7B3 is recommendation to acknowledge various items donated totaling an estimate market value of $1,095; and two, to accept donations to the Human Services Agency Senior Services Fund to support operations of the Washoe County Senior Center in the amount of $150, retroactive for the period of January 21, 2021, through March 20, 2021, and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments. Item 7C is recommendation to accept a donation of 430 First Line CLP Oil Applicator Pens in the estimated value of $4,300 from First Line Limited owner Ricky Garretson Jr. to be utilized for the safety of commissioned staff members, Sheriff's Office. There they are. This is in the form of a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Do I have a motion from the Vice Chairman? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Hill. Is there any public comment on any of these?
There's nobody signed in.
Seeing no public comment, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes on the screen. We're going to, so, we're going to recess really briefly. I made a huge mistake. We'll take about a five-minute break. I'd like to take pictures with our guests that came today for the proclamations, so we're going to briefly recess and take those pictures, and then we'll come back in about Ladies and gentlemen, I'll call us back into order here. It's 11:30. We'll jump back in here. We are now on to our consent agenda. Item 8, Mr. Manager, is there anything on the consent agenda that we need to change or have noticed?
No, sir. We're all set.
All right, so our consent agenda is ready for approval. I'd like to point out a couple of our Commissioners, or Commissioner Jung, will you do that for me? You do it so eloquently all the time. Will you point out the donations of the Commission District Special Funds for?
Oh, I would love to. In consent, please have, take your attention to Commission 8B1, as in Bravo, 8 Bravo 1. This is a recommendation to improve, to approve the Commission's Special District Fund Disbursement. By the way, we have a deadline that we need to get that spent because the fiscal year does end on June 30. And in item 8B1, Commissioner Vaughn Hartung, who is also our Vice Chairman, is spending half, a full 50% of his district funds to support the new Vantage F3 robot and control system to reduce the human-to-human escalation that is often experienced when law enforcement comes for an emergency, even if you called them yourself, because of this high state of agitation that you're in. And this is in his mind to ensure that all of us are safe and that our justice and our rights are preserved, as well as keeping this community positive and supportive of those interventions. So I applaud Mr. Vice Chairman for this, for using a full 50% of his special district funds to make sure that the SWAT team has all the current technological advances to make sure that you as citizens and, yes, law enforcement as well, are safe in all of our interactions together, because that truly is the only way we'll have justice amongst each other. So I commend Mr. Vice Chairman for this, for his generosity, and always for his creative thinking and forward beliefs in how it is best for us to take care of the many responsibilities that you've heard through public comment that we have responsibility for, and some people just give us the responsibility for, so they will just blame us for it. The next item is 8 Bravo 2, and this is Commissioner Jean Herman's district funds, and she is giving $4,000 to, total with $2,000 to the Washoe County 4-H Youth Development Program of the University of Nevada Extension to support the 4-H large livestock and horse programs, very expensive programs, and I would say critical to. programs, very expensive programs, and I would say critical to the, some of our rural interfaces, and also just young people that want to try this out. You never know if you might want to be a rancher at some point in your life. She's also giving $2,000 to the Food Bank of Northern Nevada to support their mobile harvest distribution, which goes to food deserts and, and then food areas that are overpopulated with food, to make sure that the food bank is distributing this in a way that's fair and equitable, and most importantly, to address those food deserts that we know very well exist throughout this whole region. And I might say, we're not individual in that way, it's across the whole country too, with food deserts. So, I commend Commissioner Herman for her involvement and her commitment to the livestock and horse programs, as well as feeding those people who may not have nutritious and fresh vegetable harvests for, in their communities, or that are easy for them to partake in. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung, very nice. Always eloquently, eloquently said. So, this is our consent agenda, we have items 8A1 through 8B2.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I, may I just make a quick comment?
You may, sir.
On item 8B1, I'd like to note that the SWAT team has been out raising money for the last nearly two years on this item, and this was kind of the final push for them. We've been trying to get this, they've been trying to get this done for, for quite some time, but what I would recommend is, is once they, once they obtain this robot and they get it into service, I'd like to see it right here in the chamber to, to talk about some of these non-lethal opportunities that the sheriff is, is instituting, and, and that make our community safer and, and make it safer for citizens. And I couldn't agree more, and an agitated State Commissioner Jung, I mean, that was extremely eloquently put, and, and when, when that happens, sadly mistakes can be made, and so, this is, this is a great opportunity to try to reduce those, those errors as much as possible on both sides.
Great.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. All right, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as posted.
So moved, Hartung.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Hartung. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Herman. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, we did have public comment on item 8B1.
I'm sorry, I'm very sorry. Didn't show up on my screen, I didn't see it, so I apologize.
Anne Marie Grant, for the record, I don't pretend like anything I say matters when you vote anyway, so, doesn't matter that you didn't call for public comment before you called for the vote. Typical deadline isn't an excuse for this donation. You've known all about when your deadline was. Any way you want to try to save lives, show me the data where robots have saved lives. They may have been pushing for this for however many years, while the L bracket bunks, the L brackets on the bunks have been an issue since 2015, and you've seen the number of suicide attempts. You've congratulated the sheriff's office for stopping them, but you could have donated that money to something a little more appropriate, since I don't think you have any data to show that robots save lives. And they've got plenty of resources already, armored vehicles, stab vests, you name it, they've got it, helicopters, but they're still killing community members, so any way you want to try to spoon-feed it and pass it, you go for that, Kitty Jung. You've had your own interactions with law enforcement. Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Now with that, we've had public comment on item, we've called for the vote, the vote was unanimously passed. We are on to item nine. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, real quick, Nate Edwards, can you recall, can you recall the vote, so it's clear in the record whether that was completed, and plus, the public comment has now been held?
Absolutely, we can do that. All right, we have a motion from the Vice Chair, second from Commissioner Herman. I'll call for the vote one more time on items 8A1 through 8B2. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Oh. All right, thank you, Mr. DA. All right, on to item nine. Mr. Manager.
Item nine is a recommendation and possible action to approve the Washoe County COVID-19 Local Mitigation and Enforcement Plan, the direct, and direction to staff to submit the plan to the COVID-19 Migration and Management Task Force for approval as the final local plan for Washoe County is required by the Governor's Declaration of Emergency Directive 41. The plan was developed as required by the directive, which delegated to the counties the duty and authority to develop a COVID-19 local mitigation and enforcement plan, to be submitted to the task force for approval prior to the governor delegating management and mitigation measures and transitioning authority to local control. As required by the directive, the county consulted, collaborated with, and has received the endorsement of the plan from the county health officer, Kevin Dick, the Washoe County District Superintendent, local and regional hospitals, the Nevada Hospital Association, and the city managers of Reno and Sparks in creating the plan. The proposed plan addresses the topics required by the directive, including mitigation measures for public gatherings and events, including a process for reviewing and approval of large gathering plans, retail businesses and indoor malls, community recreation centers, including public pools, food and beverage establishments such as laws, I'm sorry, such as bars, wineries, distilleries and breweries, places of worship, gyms, fitness studios, yoga studios, dance studios, martial arts, and similar establishments, spas, massage hair salons and barber shops, nail salon, body art and piercing, and similar establishments, arcades, racetracks, bowling alleys, mini golf, pool halls, theme parks, and similar activities, and youth and adult recreational sports. The plan also includes enforcement measures and procedures for ensuring compliance with mitigation measures, a strategy for ensuring adequate monitoring of COVID-19, and public information campaigns to promote public health measures and vaccination efforts. Unless the task force returns the plan for further revision, this will be the final local plan.
All right. With that, we have Assistant County Manager Solero, also incident man, incident management, emergency management commander, right? Something like that. I can't even, whatever your title is now. But, before we jump into this, Mr. Manager and Commission, you know, I want to make a point that still as of, I mean, today, we've been working with the state's office to, the state to identify the path forward that Governor Sisalak put us, announced last week during his press conference in regards to local authority and reopening date of June 1. First of all, I want to thank staff for all the time and energy you've put into this. This has been a very hard road to hoe, so to speak. Many, and also, one of the reasons that this commission took extra time to consider that based upon that press conference was to really provide transparency, to provide transparency not only to those who felt that the plan was cooked in a, you know, in a vacuum, but this was an ability for everybody to see the plan, participate in the discussion, and really bring back any substantive comments in regards to how the plan would work for the next 31 days of May. So, with that, with that being said, Mr. Manager, I will turn it over to you for your presentation, so thank you so much.
Good morning. For the record, Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager. Commissioners, as you're aware, you provided me direction related to the changes that were desired in the proposed local authority plan on April 8. After that meeting, I worked with our local task force to determine if those changes could be integrated into a plan that would receive endorsement per the requirements of the Governor's Directive 041. That includes the Nevada Hospital Association, the City of Reno, City of Sparks, the Health District, and the Schools District Superintendent. Then on Tuesday, April 13, Governor Sisalak held a press conference where he discussed a plan to get the, get to the point where every county in the state could open at 100% capacity by June 1. In that press conference, information was provided that Directive 021, which outlines social distancing and hygiene requirements, would be amended. Since that press conference, more confusion related to exactly what that social distancing requirement will or will not be has been circulating. At the state task force meeting last week, there was mention defining social distancing would be transferred to the local authority, and in another instance, the social distancing would be defined as the CDC-recommended guidance. I would like to say that as of this morning, the written directive has not come out, however, it was just posted at about 11:22 this morning, so I've had about 10 minutes to review what that, what that Directive 044 happens to say, which actually puts us in an awkward position still in my, you know, decision coming forward with this plan, because what I presented to you is two plans. One plan as directed by this board on April 8, and then a second plan that has received the endorsement of the groups. And I will walk through both plans, starting with the plan that you directed, and to, to talk about the, the locations where they're, they're a little bit different, because there are some nuances between the two. However, just based on what I'm reading in Directive 44, some of that becomes a, you know, a, a non-existing issue, at least as, as near as I can tell. So, one thing that is very clear in both the press conference and Directive 44, and I think this is very important for the board as well as the community, is the overall mask mandate will still be in effect at the governor's level. So, we cannot go in and change anything associated with masks within our planning. There's a provision in here that says essentially that anything we try to loosen related to mask-wearing will be essentially denied. So, that's what, that's, you know, just like I say, the cursory review of item 44, so...
Mr. Manager, if I can jump in really quickly, I will read directly from the directive, as I have it right here. Directive 44 makes clear that any provision of a local plan adopted by a county conflicts with the statewide mitigation measure, such as a mandated face coverings per Directive 024, that provision is void. So, it's very clear and very well outlined, right at the very top of that line. So, with that, sorry, Mr. Man.
Not, not a problem, thank you very much. So, Commissioners, in front of you, you have two plans, and they look exactly the same on the front cover page. I'm sorry about that, but really, the difference is on the second page, in the lower left-hand corner, I'm going to be starting with the item that says revised 414, 2021. That is the one that was directed by this board for me to include in the plan. The endorsed plan that I have verbal endorsement from our partners is dated revised 416, 2021. So, just to make sure we're, we're on the same ones, I'm going to be reading off of 414, 2021. So, on the first page, looks, looks like this is our roadmap to recovery. The group is now 10, that was directly directed by this board, as well as no restrictions on private gatherings. I would like to, you know, to, to note, though, that we, we put in there to please continue to follow CDC guidance on private gatherings to lessen the spread. So, that's, that's the change on page one. On page two, the second page, which starts out with our guiding principles, in the middle of that page, you will see that I have added a definition for social distancing. Of course, this was before we had Directive 044, so, at the time, this plan, as discussed between the chair and I, had zero social distancing outdoors becoming, as of May 1, that was directed, directed directly from this board. However, indoors, we would recommend to have social distancing, recommend social distancing per the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And then if during the period described, the age 16-plus population reaches a fully vaccinated rate of 50%, we would eliminate the social distancing. Based on what I've read within Directive 44, the governor is removing all social distancing as of May 1, so that might be a, a non-issue in this plan. May 1, April 30 at 11:59 PM.
As it reads right here, "As of May 1, 2021, the state emergency directives will no longer include social distancing and sanitation guidelines. The counties and school districts will have the authority to include social distancing measures within their mitigation plans, but public health experts continue to recommend that Nevada's practice safe social distancing." So, it says, "May 1, no longer include social distancing and sanitation guidelines."
So, that was, that is what's in the directive, that was what was in this plan. However, the endorsed plan, as we went through with the, with the other groups, I want to make sure that the second plan you have required social distancing from May 1 to May 31 as recommended by the CDC. So, that was the nuance there. I, I bring that up because I still have that endorsed plan by that group, and while the governor's directive may change how that endorsement looks based on governor, it is clear in the directive that this board could be more restrictive than the governor's directive. So, I just wanted to throw that out there, because I do have two plans, one that says no social distancing, or social distancing recommended. The governor's now apparently gotten rid of that, and then a recommendation by the endorsing group to have social distancing for the 31 days of May. So, I hope I haven't confused the public at this point. So, when you flip that page over, we have the chart that was discussed by this, this board that talks about, you know, really, it was about, on the left-hand side, the vaccination rate to reduce social distancing, consistent with what we had there before. You also directed that based on hospital capacity and vaccination rates above 50%, the board may lessen restrictions in the future. That is still captured in this document, different than what is captured in the endorsed plan from the group, which ended all social distancing on June 20, or June 1, 2021, per the governor's desire. And so, that was still, that was in there. And then on the increasing transmission side, we, we have two differences as well. So, in the plan directed by the board, the Washoe County Health District will monitor the hospital bed use and make recommendations to the board through the incident commander at every other regularly scheduled board meeting. That was the two weeks that you all wanted to have items coming back based on hospital bed, and then we kept the, the case counts at 625 per 100,000 over a 30-day period, because that's what we can adequately contact trace with disease transmission. In the approved plan, or the, sorry, in the endorsed plan, the increasing transmission piece, in lieu of the Health District monitoring the hospital bed use, it talks about utilizing the COVID risk meter at the red level to re-initiate the 50% capacities. So, that was similar to what we had before, along those lines. I know I've heard from this board as well, the use of the sewer study, and so, we have initiated discussions with the University of Nevada Reno for a proposal to, to do a couple of things, continue the monitoring that is ongoing at the, at the major interceptors, as well as picking up 12 identified locations that they were doing during the, the review itself, that gets it more down to a granular level to target neighborhoods. So, Commissioner Jung, we, we've heard you loud and clear, and that is important, so we are working with the, the university to get a proposal to understand what that ongoing mitigation would be. Moving on in the plan to large gatherings, again, I think with the announcement by the governor, this one might, might be a little different, but it was really all around the social distancing for the month of May in the endorsed plan, CDC guidance. In, in the board-directed plan, it was to not have social distancing until 50%, or sorry, we would have social distancing recommended until we got to 50%, and then at 50%, it would go to zero. But again, that has changed with that. The, the, the group that endorsed the, the plan would still like to have outdoor gatherings at event venues during the month of May, limited to 25 people. So, this is in the parking lots after an event, this were, these are some of the areas where we have disease transmission. I don't know if that, you know, I, I don't know where that lands right now based on the governor's directive, so I, I just wanted to bring that forward, that that was a request in the endorsed plan, that we have outdoor gatherings outside of events at 25 people or less. So, as you'll recall, our attendees are currently at 500 before you need a plan during the month of May, and that would continue in both plans. Moving then to gyms, fitness, dance, yoga studios, martial arts, this board directed to have no mask-wearing within gyms at, while actively exercising. It's, it's hard to understand where that's going to land with the Directive 044. So, in the endorsed plan, we simply stated that mask-wearing per Directive 24. And then the last item on both plans, I just wanted to call it to your attention because it was not in the, the direction by the board, and it wasn't in the plan earlier when presented on the 8th, is second to last page, we added a, a section in for the Washoe County School District during the governor's speech on the, I believe it was the, I can't even remember, last Tuesday, the 13th. There was discussion related to the, the school districts being, the directives being removed for the school districts and put into the local authority plan. It looks like that kind of happens, but it allows the school board to be the ones to determine social distancing and hygiene practices within schools. That's the way we've actually got this written. That was a request of the school district before this directive came out, so that's the way we, we've written this piece for the school district to capture that, and then additional measures is to comply with the large gathering. And then additional measures is to comply with the large gathering event plans, no different than anybody else within our community at their venues. And then, consistent with the governor's request or strive to be a hundred percent open on June first, we were going to open businesses, nightclubs, adult entertainment establishments on June first within this plan. So the proposal is that they remain closed through June first, and then we open them up June first, consistent with the governor's directives. So I know that's a lot of information, and it's a little disjointed, a little bit different than I wanted to because of the information that we just got via Directive forty-four, and I have no idea how our endorsing agencies will be reacting to that directive there related to social distancing specifically within our plan. So at this time, I'd like to turn it back over to the board for questions, comments.
Perfect. Thank you, Assistant County Manager Solera. I do appreciate it. You know, once again, I want to make a comment. Mr. Solera has worked diligently with Mr. Brown to identify this plan. It has been very difficult for us to write this plan and address the needs of the community for this plan because we just, as he pointed out, we just received this morning the written directive from the governor's office. And we respect the governor and his attempt to continue to move us forward, and, but this has been very challenging for us. So we look forward to working with him and identifying really what the directive means and trying to identify specifics. But it's, with all that, I mean, Mr. Solera and Mr. Brown have done a ton of work on this in bringing the community and a number of stakeholders to participate in the discussion. So with that, I will turn it over to the board for a discussion. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Solera, I'm Vex. And we've had this conversation. You can get on an airplane today. I told you, I had two family members who flew both from Reno and back to Reno. One flew to Houston, another flew from Phoenix and then back to Phoenix. No social distancing on the planes. They made them social distance when they lined up, but there was no social distancing on the planes. It was arm to arm. Every single seat was filled. And so I'm just saying, this is what's happening. So I'm, and I don't, and I don't understand if we're going to eliminate social distancing on the first, correct? Or we're going to open up, what's?
The way I read Directive forty-four, the governor has eliminated social distancing from all directives that are currently out there.
What's going to change on the, on June first? What's the difference? I'm just trying to understand. I'm just, and I'm not angry at you, Dave.
No, 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 I realize. In reading through the directive, Commissioner.
Maybe that's a rhetorical question.
Well, it appears that other directives will be eliminated come.
Maybe it's a rhetorical question. I don't get it. I would like to note that brothels closed. They're not even legal in Washoe County, Dave. So, yeah, they're going to remain closed. I know that that came out of another plan, but, you know, I mean, it's, it's a little misleading. I, like Tom Hanks in Big, I don't get it. I don't get it. And Nate, Mr. Edwards, I'd really like to understand what the governor's actual authority here is. I mean, it seems like they're giving us authority, but we're going through these motions. I don't get it. I mean, they're taking, they're taking the roadblocks down, you know, halfway through, but yet one group, you know, says that this is the BCC plan is not good, and the endorsed plan is good, and there's, I mean, who's in charge here? And, and, you know, and I'm going to be, and this is not necessarily towards you, but, but, you know, there's a, there's a funny, funny little, little thing that has been out for years. And, and I think it's, I think it's appropriate. It says, "It's not my job to drive the train the whistle I can't blow. I'm not allowed to say how far the train's allowed to go. I'm not allowed to shoot off steam nor even clang the bell, but let the damn thing jump the tracks and see who catches hell." This is what we have right here. I'm sorry. It's not our job to drive the train. The governor has been very clear with that, but yet they're asking us for a plan, but then when we give a plan, we can't get all the people on board, but, but we're not the ones who are in charge. So I, this is all rhetorical. I'm frustrated beyond imagination that we're even sitting here having this conversation. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, it's fine. Good comments. Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And to Dave, I think what is important to a lot of people in this community is that anyone who can get a vaccine can get a vaccine. And I was just curious, are we at that point? I'm hearing on the news that there's a lot of appointments. I was just curious if, if you wanted to get a vaccine, you could sign up today?
That is correct. You can sign up as long as you're sixteen years of age or older.
Okay. Because that's the concern I think a lot of people have with opening, opening all the way up, is that service workers wouldn't have access to vaccines. But my understanding is that we've done a big push to ensure that service workers have been vaccinated?
That is correct. And we currently have, we continue to open days for vaccination. We, I believe, are pretty close to full up all through the month of April and starting into May, maybe at least the first week of May, completely full, ready to go. So, you know, there are, you couldn't go down and just sign up today for a shot tomorrow.
Sure.
But certainly within the next three or four weeks, you should be able to get an appointment.
So I think the other question is, because the governor's saying we can open now without any social distancing May one, but then the endorsed plan states that they'd like to see some distancing or some social distancing in place on May one, when there is local control. How many people do you think, or what's the percentage of population will we have vaccinated by May one? Do you have any idea?
So just looking at the numbers from the state website this morning, that were updated this morning, you know, we are, we are forty-five percent of sixteen-plus population has initiated their vaccine as of this morning or yesterday.
Mr. Solera, it's actually forty-six point two-five.
Forty-six, so it must have been updated this morning. So, so anyway, you know, so forty-five percent of our population is currently initiated vaccine as of forty-six percent as of today. So you push that out five or six weeks to those people, you know, that's when that amount of people will be fully vaccinated. So, you know, that pushes you into May for fully vaccination, full vaccination. That's three or four weeks, depending on the vaccine, plus two weeks for making it hold. So that number, you know, you take that forty-six percent, and in six weeks, you'd be pretty certain that forty-six percent of our population will be fully vaccinated.
So the, I don't know if anyone on the endorsed plan list knew that the governor would be announcing May one. I'm assuming no. That's a surprise to all of us.
Yeah, I mean, we had heard some rumblings out there that, based on the, based on the press conference. But like I say, at the task force, there were a couple of different answers given, that it was going to be CDC-regulated, you know, it was going to be a requirement that we follow CDC guidance, or that we just recommend CDC guidance. And so we didn't know exactly until we got this directive this morning.
It's just really hard for this body to go stricter than the governor on May one, I think, just knowing the accessibility of vaccines in our region. That's all I wanted to make sure was noted for the record for folks that are concerned about opening up.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Like I said before, I've been pretty consistent in my thoughts about this, and I have, I would have a very difficult time changing. I don't have a lot of faith in our governor right now because there's been so many changes. Emergencies are supposed to last a month. And I, since that time, when that was over, I was over it, and so have a lot of people in this county been over it. And it's no offense to you or anybody here, I know you're all trying to do your job. And, but, you know, I just, I just can't accept any of these plans because none of them are consistent. None of them are, there's no definite anything. I, we've had a whole year of experience in this. I mean, it's been trial and error the whole time. We've put our citizens through hell. And I know they're over it. They've been treated like prisoners in their own homes. Just like little Miss Sutton today. I mean, that was coming from her heart when she said, "You've taken a year out of my life as a child." The people are hurting. I would still like to see a resolution come before this board. I'm sorry, but I can't go with any more of this. It's too much, too much, too long. I want to be free in the country I live in. I was born on the Fourth of July, and I just, this stuff just is just dragging on way too long. We could stop it. Those people that want to feel safer and want to stay home, that's fine. They have that choice maybe, but I just don't think we can push the folks into this any longer. I'm sorry, but that's just the way I feel.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. I appreciate that. Commissioner Young, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I share the frustration that the vice chairman has conveyed, and I am confused somewhat as well. But I think that it's important, and we should be mindful of what role we're playing here. Because if you look at the staff report, these plans were endorsed by people who are not elected officials. So we get to be the final pass on what the, what you've been told to do. I'm not saying that's anything wrong, that you're, sometimes it's better when there's not elected officials in there because then they get political pageantry involved in all of it, too. So sometimes it's better to have the managers, you know, sitting down and saying, what do you think would be okay? But really, we're doing a solid to the citizens by being the approving board that vetted this publicly. Nobody else had a public vet. Their chambers aren't open either. I might remind everyone. So I'm okay doing that, taking the responsibility as well as the criticism that come with it. And I believe that this board, working with what we knew in that moment, and I get it too from the governor, the data changes every day, and we have to stay close to the data. The other issue is, this is a new phenomenon. Nobody's been through this ever in their lifetime. So as good science does, good science every day is changing, too. I know people want to throw it out with that because they're so frustrated that it didn't go according to their plan. But science should be always challenging the status quo and re-establishing, and we'll always have different guidelines. When it comes down to brushing your teeth or getting breast exams, they change every year based on data. So I get it, that we, everybody is confused and a little bit frustrated. But I'm okay with our staff and this board publicly being the regional leaders that vet this in a public process and make sure that we've taken in everything we can, and we are mindful of the ultimate authority over the governor. Whether you're sick of this or not, there are laws in this country, and there are laws in this county. And if you don't like the law as it's written today, this is your responsibility, not to break the law, but to go and change said law at the legislature, hire new people that you want to run for you, get them elected, that they will challenge that. But I will say, at the bottom line, this community has made me so proud. Because while we might not, we're like a family, you know, we're like one big dysfunctional family. While we might not all agree with what is going on, when the rubber hits the road, this group, this region, these municipalities, the school district, the hospitals association, the other endorsers, the district health, the board of health, and the health officer, I think, you know, we might have some back-room arguments about things and throw ourselves around a little bit, not knowing what to do. And really, it was sheer fear, I believe, on that, and that untenable ground. But ultimately, I'm proud of this board, and I'm proud of this chair, who said, "Yeah, I'll take it before us. Give it to me, Mr. Governor, and I'll try to wrangle these wild cats in this community to try to get where we want to get with this." I'm very proud of the job we've done, and I don't want to lose sight of that. And I'm ready to move forward with these changes because ultimately, the assessor of whether or not we've done this right is the governor. And whether or not they'll give it to the governor to then tell us whether we can go on forward or if we can stop. And I think that we made our case, we decided to make this into a negotiation, right? Staff brought us the information that they, that they had all got endorsed from these different professionals, but they brought it here, and our chairman allowed us to have a negotiation, tinker with it in as much as he could, knew he was kind of walking this line. And now it came back, and we're here to finalize our decision. But I think we ultimately deserve the credit for having the public vetting of this. And when you, when that happens, we know that there will be changes, minor or major. And I don't believe the changes that have come back in response to what we had started from are so superfluous or so out of control of the mandates that we can't live under them. And I endorsed this plan, I endorsed our revised plan, now I endorse the endorsed plan and the revision of the endorsed plan, if that helps you get any more confused. But I do, I want to say to staff, too, that, you know, we asked you to do a big lift, and we can't forget this. And I find myself sometimes forgetting this, that this last year has been hell, holy hell on everyone. And we had staff members who people love to blame for everything, which I can't take it, blame me, I'm the elected official. Staff members who risked their lives to come to work and make sure your county was still working when, when you couldn't leave your house. So I want to get back to that and how much I have so much gratitude to what this board has done, what the manager has done, what the chairman has done, in close contact with all of our resources throughout the state, made great friendships as well. This whole board does a great job with their area of expertise, and I, I don't want to miss the point that we're all frustrated, we feel a little disempowered, but ultimately, Mr. Vice Chairman, we did stand tall, and we did do this publicly with the light of day on top of this. So I am proud of that. And then to go to the vaccinations issue, we need to push out, too, you don't have to all go to the government site for vaccinations. All your major pharmacies, your doctor, your podiatrist, I saw a thing on Reddit that said in Reno, all the different places that you can go, you don't have to go to the government vaccination site, you can see your own physician, you can go and walk into any pharmacy. Call them first, don't quote me because then you'll be calling me that I gave you the wrong information. Call them first, but they have the vaccinations. Save Mart has, that's my pharmacy, forever had the outgoing message saying, "We don't have vaccinations," right? Leave us alone. Now that we have vaccinations, anytime you need to. So I know that the, the supply is plentiful, and you have many opportunities of where you could go. Before, we didn't release all those because we wanted to make sure that our priority people first got the vaccinations. So if you want to get a vaccination and you can't find a site, please call me, and I will be very happy to help you. I'll drive you if you need it, because it is not something that's a golden ticket anymore. And I want people to be empowered to make that decision for themselves. You don't want to get a vaccination? That's okay. We'll do all, I feel like I'm doing all the work then, but that's okay, too. I'll make sure me and my family are working and doing this to make sure nobody else gets sick, but I'm not going to get in an argument with you about it anymore. And I still say, and please don't let it get lost in all of this, what a stellar job we have done to make sure this came before public in an open chambers, to make sure that their voices were heard. And we, I believe, we did a good job in our revisions trying to balance all, but if the governor doesn't like it, guess what, folks? We have to, we, there is a form of authority in government, all government, of how these jurisdictions go. So I'm ready to get rocking and rolling. So I'm ready to get rocking and rolling for these next 30 days. And I think it showed a real maturity in this community that we could go back and forth and come back with a, a plan and a program. And nobody really tried to own it or be completely the opposition of it. I'm, I'm proud of us. This is the best board I've ever worked on. I just want to put that on the public record, the best board by far. And it's because of the reasonableness that I see so much and I so appreciate. And it's the reasonable of staff too, Mr. Solaro. And you, you, all of you that, I know nothing about how much you're working on this, but I know you have a different position to be in too when you're trying to carry what this board wants as well as balance with what everybody wants in the community. And that's a good thing. That's a great skill set. And I admire that in all of you. So thank you for being my peers and my colleagues and for really stepping up during this last year and, and maintaining your leadership with compassion for the disparate, the disparate views that we all have up here. So I'm, I'm proud, I'm very proud of the work. I'm proud of this manager. I'm proud of the assistant county manager and all of the staff that made this go. We really stood up and said, "All right, we're going to be the one that publicly vets it and we'll take a vote on it publicly." Nobody else has done that. And I, I'm not trying to be snarky, I'm just saying, that's what regional government does. And I, I'm glad that our region also trusts us that we can do that for them as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Joe. Great comments. Vice Chairman.
So I guess what I'm going to try to understand is, what are we going to vote on today? Because, because as per Mr. Solero, as of May 1, all the rules change. So, so the, the question comes back to, and if the governor has mandates, the governor has mandates. I, I'm, I'm not in a position to question his mandates. What I am in a position to do, however, is ask our board, "How do we enforce those mandates? Should it be us that enforces those mandates?" It's, and I, and to me, the answer is no. If the governor has mandates, he's, he's going to have to figure it out either through OSHA or whatever, whatever his plans are. But as I see it today, I think, I think we're voting on to adopt what the governor has planned on May 1. That's what I see it, which is, which is to basically let people make a decision, let them, let them decide. We cannot keep the public safe forever. We just can't, we can't do it. And, and I think there are a lot of really responsible people out there. I think there are a lot of responsible business owners and have tried to do everything they possibly can to, to abide by the mandates. That said, I, I'm, I'm just, I, I don't know what we're, I don't know what we're voting on today. And, and so because, because, and Mr. Solero, again, I, I agree with the commissioners. You guys have done a good job. I'm a little frustrated that, that we weren't at the table that someone, a representative, not all the commissioners, but there was a representative from the city councils and from the county commission talking about these, these recovery mitigation measures. All of this said, Mr. Chairman, this will be my final with, with this particular section of comment. If we adopt something, do the cities of Reno and Sparks have to follow that? Because Reno has its own municipal code. Sparks has its own municipal code. We do not hand out business licenses, which has been pointed out in either one of the two municipalities. We do not enforce laws in the two municipalities. I, I'm, I question what our actual authority is. And that, that kind of goes back to what I was, the rhetorical comments made earlier of, of who's, who's really in charge here? And the train thing?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. So I'm going to take a, I'm going to take a stab at this in regards to trying to answer some questions and bring some clarity about kind of course of action and where we stand today based upon BCC suggested plan, the endorsed plan and Directive 44, which we just received. So I'm going to read to you a little bit first. You know, 414.06 of NRS is the guiding law that provides for direction to the governor during emergency powers. And that is clearly outlined within the directive. That says, and I, I'm quoting here. For NRS 414.060, outlines the powers and duties delegated to the governor during the existence of a state of emergency, including without limitation directing and controlling the conduct of general public and the movement and cessation of movement of pedestrians, vehicular traffic during and before, after exercises or an emergency disaster, public meetings or gatherings. And in Article 5, Section 1 of the Nevada State Constitution, it provides that the supreme executive power of the state shall be vested in a chief magistrate who shall, who shall be the governor of the state of Nevada. There, within 414, gives us the pure guideline of why we are where we are and what we have to do. And that's why we keep seeing directives because until the legislature or the governor declares no longer a state of emergency and returns to that, we can't. And there's not really a timeline. It's very vague in regards to a timeline. So we could fight that in court all day long and do whatever you want to do. Have at it. But that's what NRS states. And so if we're going to follow the rules of the law, I mean, laws of the land, that's where we go. Secondly, if you go to this Section 4, now this is Section 4, specific, kind of into the specifics of this. In Section 4 of the directive, "The following shall terminate at 11:59 PM on April 30th, 2021." The social, the first marker would be "social distancing requirements and hygiene considerations set forth in Directive 021." And then it says Section 2 of Directive 007 and "any other directive provisions mandating statewide social distancing." So it's very clearly outlined in Section 4 that social distancing will terminate on 11:59, April 30th, 2021. Then you will, and then we want to move down to Section 12. If you go down to Section 12, further into the directive, "If a county wishes to change its local plan after receiving a delegation authority pursuant to Directive 41, such changes must be approved by its board of county commissioners. The county must submit a report to the task force that describes the changes, includes a copy of the local amended plan and states whether the changes received, and states whether the changes received, the endorsement of the following entities." Now it just, you have to state whether you received the endorsement, not necessarily received the endorsement per the directive. And those people that would provide the endorsements would be the local health district authority, the superintendent of the local school district, city manager for any city within the county population in excess of 100,000, and the Nevada Hospital Association and/or the Nevada Rural Hospital Association. So those changes, and after June 1st, on June 1st, the county will no longer have to follow the process set forth in this section and can update and change the plan as we see fit by, just a standard agenda item by this board, no matter with, without any discussion of any other local entities within. So we have the authority carte blanche, June 1. But, but until that time, we have to submit a plan, which we have to do on Thursday. We are, we are stylized to come in front of the state task force on Thursday along with Clark County to present our plan in some form or fashion. And, and says, but based upon the directive, it allows us the ability to move plans forward with or without endorsements. So now that we have kind of a playing field of where we are, I want to make sure everybody read that and we have that understanding. I want to give the, an opportunity to Mr. Solero to kind of proper a possible path forward for us. Mr. Solero.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager. I think one of the things that's important for this board and our citizens to recognize is if we do not receive a local authority from the governor through this process, for May, you know, May 1 through May 31st, regardless of social distancing and was done with Directive 44, our businesses will be limited to 50% of the fire code capacity. Our events will be limited to 250 participants without a plan. You can go above that with a plan. And I, I also think it's important to recognize that COVID spread doesn't recognize dates either. And so it is still incumbent upon our citizens to take into account their personal choices on what it is they're doing, whether they're going to go get a vaccine. And if they're not going to get a vaccine, the precautions to take for themselves to keep themselves safe. And more importantly, not only to keep themselves safe, but to keep others safe that may interact with them. So having said all of that on top of this, because I think it's important that this board come forward with a plan that we can get to the, to the, to the task force so that we can gain local authority. Because important things have occurred over the last month and a half as we've gone through this. The business owners would like to see something change. And so I think we can get there. And so my recommendation to this board would actually be to start with the endorsed plan. This is the one that's 41604. Or sorry, it's 41621. I'm going back in time already.
Yeah. Don't do that, Dave.
So where we talk about Washtau County Guidelines Overview, after the guiding principles and the objectives, we actually replace the section on social distancing within this document to, to more mirror what is in the board-directed plan, which would read something along the lines of, "For purposes of this document and based on Directive 44 and direction from the Board of County Commissioners on April 8th, 2021, during the period of May 1, 2021 through 11:59 PM on May 31st, 2021, social distancing referenced in this document is recommended to be consistent with Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Guidance on Social Distancing." So that's, again, that is recognizing that it's a recommendation from this board that social distancing still matters within our community if you so choose to frequent places of business. I heard from business operators that they still have employees and others that are maybe not ready for full face-to-face contact with a lot of people coming in the, in the business. So I think it's, it's good to recognize that. This is my opinion. I'm just throwing it out there. This is something I think I can, based on the Directive 44, I think I can gain consensus with our other partners for endorsements. So that would be my recommendation there. That also changes in the chart. So I would utilize the same chart, but I would put in there that social distancing requirements, I would, I would mirror that same language that social distancing is recommended for CDC guidance for the period of May 31st through, or May 1st through May 31st. Again, it's a recommendation, but I do like that we, we remove all other requirements as of June 1st. So what this means is that our, our event plans and all those other sorts of things, there's no need for us to continue to enforce and create and review plans come June 1st based on everything we've got here in, in what I've seen in 44. Those would be the two changes that I would make to this document that I think can be endorsed and provided to the task force for our local authority to be granted from May 1st through May 31st. That would be my recommendation, Chair.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry. I'll also remove brothels from this chart on the back page.
All right. I do have some specific clarifications in regards to the endorsed plan. Currently, there was a recommendation to move to three feet, but the CDC recommendation is still six feet. We are just going with a recommendation of six feet for, it's a recommendation, not a mandate for the social distancing.
Correct.
The monitoring will be now in the endorsed plan, following the COVID meter as a risk assessment, not necessarily a guiding principle. That still, the hospitalization rate will be considered and that final discussion will come before this board for any kind of further restrictions. Is that correct?
That is correct. So if you look at, maybe we can make that change here. So monitoring adjustments to the guidelines, I would actually take the monitoring adjustment paragraph out of the revised 414 document and insert that into the 416 document. Because that one clearly states that the hospital capacity will be the primary metric coupled with the Trucamidos Risk Meter, sewer prevalence study data and vaccination rates to be, to be used in addition to the three metrics tracked at the state level. So that's where that pulls that, that metric in that the, that the board had requested.
Okay. Great. Public gatherings and large events, I've reviewed, feel fine with those. Have we, has there been any discussion in regards to SB 4 with any of the state officials or anybody from the Nevada Resort Association in regards to elevators and, and different things of that compliance? Because that does still fall underneath the health district and also the county as it pertains to those restrictions, though overseen by the gaming control board.
That, that is correct. So currently, the SB 4 is state law and that has some requirements for gaming operators and the way they have to operate with social distancing is very clear in, in the state law what that means. There is some conflict with what we're trying to propose here. I think there's some conflict with social distancing. I, I do know that that, it seems to me at least that that ought to be changed at the legislature if, if, if we need to, to do that. But I'm not so sure that that is something that Washtau County needs to carry forward. We will certainly, the health district will continue the enforcement as required by law until that is changed or if it is changed. But I have not had any conversations with anybody at gaming control board or any of the gaming establishments related to SB 4.
Okay. And then moving on to youth and adult recreational sports, some of the, under additional measures there, the recommendations of number of spectators allowed as complying with social distancing, that would also change now based upon, that would change based upon the May 3, May 1st recommendation, correct?
That's correct. It would, it would change based on Directive 44.
Okay. And then food and beverage establishments would still be limited to 50% capacity? Is that what we're, it says under the, allow, may allow indoor and outdoor dining, maintaining social distancing between customers if not possible or causes a hardship limit to 50, 50% capacity. But now we don't have social distancing. How does that change that?
That, that's a really good question, Chair. I can, I just want to make sure, because it's a little bit different in both documents, I want to make sure I've got it.
Well, these are things we've got to definitely address going forward.
Yep, appropriately for you.
Before our Thursday. And that's why I want to bring it up now and have this discussion now because we will not have another opportunity in front of this board before the Thursday date for that presentation. I want to make sure everybody on this board is very clear about the process going forward.
So, so Chair, I think the, the language in the 414 document might be appropriate. It may allow indoor and outdoor dining, maintaining social distancing between customers. Businesses can set their own limits if there's a hardship to monitor, you know, social distancing. I think maybe we, we, you know, take out the monitor social distancing section of that and portray that through all of them because obviously the social distancing has changed. It's a recommendation by this board. And so, but if there is a hardship, businesses could indeed limit their own capacities based on their own needs with their workforce and, and the way they'd like to operate business.
And technically, change, without social distancing, it changes the definition of approve as well.
I think, I think you're, I think you're right. I mean, that's, that is, that is a good question. And I'll have to double check Section 4, or Directive 44 to see how it negates Directive 21, which the guidance in Directive 21, I believe, is where that set the six, you know, six persons per table.
Right.
So I, I would like to discuss, you know, potentially for this board to keep the 10 persons per table for the month of, of May.
Okay.
And that was, that was direction by this board. I feel comfortable with that myself.
Why, if they're going to eliminate social distancing in May 1, what would be the, what would be the, the value of that?
I, I, I have a, I'm, difficult time answering that question for you, Vice Chairman. I just.
So I mean, I, I, what, what would be helpful for me is, I, I have two documents here and maybe, maybe I'm just not seeing it. We have the BCC revision, which is what we agreed upon. And then we have the endorsed plan, which is what you guys went back and sort of negotiated with the partners. What I'd like to know is where the difference is. I mean, I didn't see a red line document of, of the two to, to, it would have been really helpful to see an, an actual red line. It's not a criticism. I'm just saying, what are the, what are the, what are the differences? Because as I look through these things, I can't, I, I've not been able to spot a difference yet.
Yeah, Commissioner, that was a, a big discussion on what information to provide because it's very, very confusing as you started to look at two different red line documents and all those other sorts of things.
Okay.
Essentially, the, the differences is in the social distancing section. The difference is in the monitoring adjustment to the guidelines piece, which we both, which I proffered a recommendation for both of those.
Yeah, so we're not, so we're not, they don't want us to use hospitalization rates. They want us to use some other.
So, so I would, I would take the information out of the BCC approved for monitoring and adjustments to the guidelines and replace that in the other document. The, the nuance is only related to the hospitalization piece of that. The other parts are all there. As you heard earlier with the presentation of the COVID risk meter, all of the factors that go into that are useful in our determination of whether COVID in our community is becoming a problem. Couple that with the hospital capacity that you all would like to see, it further enforces that piece. And so.
And I guess we landed on the hospitalization rates because the hospitals were literally wrapped around the axle wrapped around the axle when this whole thing sort of came down, because they were full. And I get that. I mean, I I had a family member who passed away in the hospital during the height of this whole thing, and they had a tough time finding him a room. He never did have a private room, never did. And they would not allow me in either. I could not go in and see my family member. I in fact, at right before he passed, I was going to sneak in as I was going to dress in scrubs and and print a badge on my my computer and just and just go in and I'm serious. I wanted to see my dad. I wanted to see my dad. COVID got him, and he was he was perfectly healthy in in the very beginning of January, and within 21 days, he was dead. So this is not a joke. It's it is. There was no underlying. He was he was walking, talking. He was great, and it and it really smacked him hard. The point is, is that I understand that they don't want to be, they don't want to be the pivotal piece, because by the time hospitalizations, as we're seeing them tick up, it's the argument is that it's too late. I I get that. By the time you hit the tree, it's too late to hit the brakes. I I understand completely. So I I don't necessarily agree with the argument, but I'm okay. I'm I'm I understand what the argument is. Again, though, I ask, if if all of this stuff is going to change on May 1, if the governor is releasing us as of May 1, let's let people make the decision. I mean, I'm happy to I'm happy to vote on a plan that they can take. But but what I'd also like to do, and I don't know, Mr. Edwards, are we styled today? Can we just say, as of May 1, this is what we do? We basically fall back to the governor's directives, which is let the let the businesses open, let people decide if they're if they're uncomfortable with this. And if the governor has other mandates on top of that, then that'll that'll be the state's responsibility. That's again, that's my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the time.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hill.
I I totally understand what the Vice Chairman is saying. I think the concern from staff, even though it doesn't sound like 100% logical to me, is that if we don't bring a plan like this, that we will still be stuck at 50% for the month of May. Is that what your concern is?
That is correct. That is my concern, that if we do not have a an endorsed plan for the governor to allow us to have local authority from May 1 through May 31, we would continue to follow the guide or the directives by the state. And I don't see anything in Directive 44 that lessens the 50% cap on on businesses, nor does it lessen the 250 cap on large gatherings. Again, I only had 10 minutes to look at it, so I can't 100% sure. But I think there's a transition period here, either way, that that is potential as a possibility, that I, you know, in my opinion, it doesn't hurt. It starts to get us to that point, because again, COVID doesn't care about the dates, you know. And so we're still, the last thing I want to do is is have you approve a plan, and that signal to our community that COVID is gone, and it's not a problem, and we've got no issues, because we certainly have the ability to revert back, much like Michigan has, where we get into the position where where our hospitals are are struggling again. And certainly, we do not want to do that.
Well, or put our businesses in a situation where they're at 50% through the month of May, and they were thinking they would be like at least at a higher percentage because of removing the social distancing from six feet to four or three feet. So I that's my sort of leaning on now hearing the what staff is saying on the endorsed plan, because I'd rather do that with the changes that staff is proposing than put ourselves in a situation where we're at 50% unless the board sees a different option.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hill.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Edwards.
Yes. A couple of things I wanted to interject about. And I think Mr. Solero's already hit on this, but the provisions that that you're stuck with if you don't adopt a plan are the are the sort of the default state provisions. You have the authority to make your own decisions about something like social distancing and and business caps, capacity caps, if you adopt a plan. So there's a benefit to the county in in adopting a local plan, rather than just saying, we're not going to adopt one, and and we're just going to allow the state provisions to remain in effect. Then the other thing I want to bring up, which is something you touched on already, which is that if you adopt the local plan after June 1, you can amend it without going through the process of seeking endorsements and all that type of stuff. And that leaves it to you and to your discretion to make changes to your local plan. But the way the directive is written, it says, if you've adopted a local plan, then you get to do that. If you don't adopt a local plan, then it's an open question about whether you are or are not able to come up with your own plan after June 1 and simply impose your own limitations. So I I read those, whether intentionally or not, as incentives to the local governments to adopt the plan, because then it gives you more latitude as you as you move forward.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. And so from my standpoint, and and I'm speaking for Mr. Solero and Mr. Brown, we have to do present something on Thursday, or not. But but if we don't, we will find ourselves in a more difficult, difficult situation. And so it would be my recommendation, just from an operational, pure operational standpoint, to and to fall back on what Mr. Edwards just pointed out, if we would like to amend, we can so amend our plan if we feel it's not adequate. And it gives us, because I've been reading, literally have been reading this this directive since we got it, and trying to run a meeting and and read this directive and refer back to every different spot in this in this. And Mr. Slaro and I have not had a chance to really dive into this. It it wipes out a lot of different directives. It reinstates there's sections. It's it's so complicated. It's like looking at a downtown LA freeway. And so, yeah. And so I am not in opposition of of the endorsed plan. I have challenges with the endorsed plan. I think there's just not a lot that's defined within it now, based upon what we've got out of 44. I think there's a lot of just glaring openness. Right now, I say that, you know, we need to move forward with, you know, at least recommendations. And here's the other things I would say. As Mr. Solero pointed out, we are at 46.25% of our population vaccinated at this time. That does not include the individuals that had contracted the virus and have recovered that may potentially have herd immunity to that. There are a lot of benefits to where we are. And from the last time Mr. Solero and I spoke, we are seeing at at any given week, a 2% to 4% increase of that number, based upon our ability and vaccine ability to and as Mr. Solero pointed out, and Commissioner Hill asked about, there is still a number of individuals asking to participate in the vaccine, that to the to the extent that we have them booked out three to four weeks from now. If that's still the case, and we still do all of those vaccines, shots and arms, we will be well over the 50% by May come May 1. I feel very confident that within a week, we'll be over but we'll be over that maybe with that 50% level, and darn near 60% come come June 1. And so, if not more. And I just feel that this is something that we need to adequately move forward with. You know, obviously, I asked for no masks while working out of the gym. That's clearly outlined that that can't happen. You know, there but there are other things in here that I think we need to discuss. So it would be my recommendation that we vote on some sort of form of this endorsed plan, or or our plan, doesn't matter, because based upon the directive, we don't have to have the endorsements. It just says should have the endorsements, don't have to, and vote on something, pick one of those, and let's move forward so that Mr. Solero, Mr. Brown and I can sit down, dissect this, and then really try to put some definitions back into the plan as we see it before our Thursday meeting in front of the state.
Mr. Chair, one thing to clarify, we did check with the state task force on the issue of endorsements, and we were led to believe, if we do not have endorsements, our plan will not be accepted.
So...
Correct.
And see, and that...
So the status quo would stay, Dave, Mr. Solero can correct me if I'm wrong, the status quo would stay in effect.
Yeah. For the record, Chair, I think you're looking at two different things, because we're under Directive 41 with the initial plan. And I think what you're reading in Directive 44 is any subsequent changes to our initial plan.
You're right.
Directive 41 clearly says that following receipt of the above, required endorsements. So it calls them required endorsements in Directive 41, which is what we're under in this. I know it's confusing. There are a lot of
It is.
A lot of different moving parts. But I think what you're reading in Directive 44, if we then amend the
We could amend that on May 1. So we go with so we go with the endorsements now, but we could call it an agenda item May 1 without the endorsements to change the plan May 1. Is that based upon what I'm reading in Section 12? Is that correct? So it says in Section 12...
I'll jump in, Mr. Chair. You're correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right. So right now, under 41, because of 41, but now, but if we're under 44, it supersedes 41. It does. It says it right there. That's what I'm saying. This is a downtown LA freeway, and I'm confused as all get out right now. And I'm trying to lead a meeting, and I just don't know how to get there, being that we have information that is just counterintuitive to what we're trying to do. I I'm confused. So I'm looking at the direction of the board. Vice Chair, Commissioner Jung, I have you sign in first.
Thank you. What about this? Considering that we got this directive 10 minutes before we actually got to the item, and you we haven't had legal management and subject matter experts fully vet this, what if we go with the endorsed plan as the governor asks? Because this will not be forward unless your endorsers are in that plan, with the caveat that we expect to come back here publicly and have conversations of what fit this county best and what these county needs are. And we have on this Board of Commissioners, we have a whole host of subject matter experts. We have Commissioner Herman, who has been a vocal activist for the rules. We have Commissioner Hart, Vice Chairman Commissioner Chairman Hartung, who's been a sewer and water reclamation advocate. We have Mr. Chairman Bob Lucy, who's been at this at the table from the very first day of COVID. We have Alexis Hill, Commissioner Alexis Hill, who has already brought so much a wealth of of information here, but has has been an advocate for the vaccination and the laudable aspirational goals we were moving towards with that. I think, Mr. Chairman, this is what I say. I trust you. Let's endorse this plan. I know you're still having conversations with the Gov. You're very you're connected. We most if you think you don't understand what's going on, we don't, because we don't have a direct line. But I trust you. I trust our subject matter experts. And I also know that when it comes back to our our ability to be able to have that local control, we will stamp our local flair and culture to that, because we are so very different than any other county in the state of Nevada, I would argue. So why don't we go with the endorsed plan with the holdout that you're be very certain, anybody who has any questions about this, this board is very happy to take local control, and this board would like to have the purview to have that local control with the here's where I think my expertise here is data, data analysis, and always encouraging you guys to stay just stay close to the data. That's always my sort of my word to all of it, because we'll always make good decisions then. It will it will take out the politics and the pageantry and the alarmism or the the scoffing. But I really think that we trust our chair, who we've trusted for over a year, who we've made chair again, because we knew that to change in the middle of a pandemic was really foolhardy, with somebody that developed all these relationships across the state, as well as great working relationships with our staff. I say we go there. And the nitty gritty, Mr. Vice Chairman and the rest of the commission, who all of you have every right, and I think you have great ideas, let's hash that out here in public when it's our turn. But let's let's appease staff. I mean, staff's holding here is holding this. The Board of Health is holding. I mean, everybody is watching this going, come on, you guys. Can we please just get this? And I don't want to say it's pro forma, but to the governor's credit, he's never done this before. So I think he's also relying on the big brains in this room to help him understand what the different regional challenges are. And I think we've made a great public record on this, our concerns. And we and I do trust that our chair and our vice chair will take all of our perspectives that have been that we've all been lobbying for. I trust that. And, you know, I always verify, because I trust and then verify. But I I think you guys got it. And I think that for the the good of the whole and the good of the community, and for some sort of stability, and at least some sort of guidelines, let's get that before that committee. Let's have him get it to the governor. Let's hope that he'll bless it. And let's caveat it that we do expect to be the government that's closest to the people, will be responsive to the people, Mr. Chairman. And and that's just one person's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Vice Chairman, I have you sign in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And and Mr. Solero, I appreciate that you point out that that COVID doesn't have the the boundaries. But but what we do have is, we've got a year of experience as a community with dealing with COVID. And I think people are smart enough to take care of themselves. I I truly do. Now, that I'm not I'm not of the mind that we throw the baby out with the bathwater. That said, I also understand, I mean, I've we've had to deal, Mr. Chairman, you and I, lots of times with public governmental requests and and documents where you have to submit something. Because if you don't submit something, basically, you're out.
Yeah.
You have no opportunity to to go in and and try to champion a different cause at a future time. So I understand that. And I don't think that that's selling out. I think that that's just that's the way the system has been set up.
Yeah.
Upon review of the calendar, May 1 falls on a Saturday. I might suggest that we meet on May 30, so that things could be instituted on May 1.
You mean April 30?
April 30. I beg your pardon. Thank you. Thank you for the correction. April 30. Thank you, sir. Because that's a Friday, we could convene a special meeting to basically say, look, you know, tomorrow, the governor's mandates change, or maybe we don't need to. Maybe maybe the fact that that there that they have been changed is is suitable enough, and and we can maybe we can give direction now so that that doesn't have to occur. I I don't know. I would I would look for guidance from from legal. But I'm I I don't think we're selling out by by trying to adopt a plan that the local authorities can can wrap their arms around. But I, like Commissioner Jung, do not understand how they've been given so much power. They're not electeds, not a one of them. And 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 I respect their positions in the community. I respect their acumen as as folks that that are experts in their fields. I I understand their desire to try to keep the community safe. But but again, when we start talking about things like social distancing, if if we were really serious, if the governor was really serious, he would stop any flight from leaving Nevada completely full. But he's not going to do that. And he would stop any flight from coming to Nevada that was completely full. But he's not going to do that. So we've got these inconsistencies that make it very frustrating for us as elected officials, and it makes it extremely frustrating for the public, because they have this expectation. They go, okay, well, we had to stand on these six-foot dots to get on the plane. But as soon as they put us on the plane, apparently, we're in international waters. And the rules don't apply anymore. And I don't get that. I'm sorry. I I'm not trying to be obtuse. So I'm happy to adopt a plan, but I would like some type of a caveat that that we roll on the 30th and and move towards giving giving folks, giving businesses the opportunity. I mean, we've we have an opportunity here now in front of us to allow businesses to reopen at a greater extent or to a greater extent. And if the governor has overarching mandates, that will be up to the governor. We as local governments, we're I'm I'm going to be very honest with you. I'm exhausted by being blamed, you know, because because we've we've not had this authority. And even though some folks say that we do have the authority, I'm not convinced. And Mr. Edwards, you have not chimed in yet, and I'd like to hear your your position on this. Do we have authority over the cities, over the incorporated cities? They make their own laws. They have their own law enforcement. They 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 dictate their own rules. We don't hand out business licenses. Because you have a you have a a business down here on Wells, you don't have to have a Washtau County business license to do business. You may have to have a Health Department license or an approval through the Health Department, but but you don't have to have a Washtau County license. So so what is really the extent of our authority? That's my question. my question. And thank you. I apologize, the loquacious nature of my kind.
Mr. Edwards, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, it, to the extent I can. It's a mixed bag, and there is no clear answer to your question because of the complexities of the, the interplay between counties and cities under state law. But for purposes of this plan, the county has been given the authority to adopt the plan.
That's.
And that's over the, that includes the cities. Now, note that they have to get endorsement by the city managers. And so there is sort of that check and balance concept embedded in there.
That's not the city council's.
But it's not. But the city council, you know, does ostensibly have some, you know, sway over the, what the city managers are endorsing. And so there is that check and balance in there. But it is the county, for purposes of this plan, that has been given this authority from the governor by virtue of Chapter 414 of the NRS and his authority. So that, I think that's the best answer I can give you to that question about cities versus counties under this process.
So, so one more, Mr. Chairman. And, and take a stab at this one, Mr. Edwards. If we adopt the endorsed plan today, can we put the caveat that as of May 1st, it rolls into the governor's approved plan? Can we do that today?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by that.
So, no, let me take a stab at it.
Go ahead.
Let me take a stab at it.
Please.
So based upon the directive, the way we're, it's reading, as of May 1st, we could call a special meeting and amend the plan without any endorsements, without the governor's approval. We can do that and, and submit that to the task force. But they're saying, as of May 1st, there will be no longer any approval needed by the task force. So there is some complexities to that. But as of May 1st, kind of all the, all the rules subsequently change in regards to a plan. So, so let's be very clear. Mr. Solero has presented to us an endorsed plan that would basically be for the month of May, from May 31st through the 31st. We have 10 days to get this plan approved. After those 10 days expire, we can do some substantive changes to this plan. That sees be based upon vaccination rates, best based hospitalization, based upon a number of different caveats. So it would be, as I'm reading it, that would be, that would be the way we would go about it. So am I going to get a nod over there by name, maybe? No, I guess. Okay, we'll just go, we're going to read through it later. So let's take a minute. We have public that has sat here very, very long and diligently to endure this conversation, and I want to give them an opportunity to chime in on this. So with that, Madam Clerk, will you please call public comment?
The very patient Ms. Cindy Martinez.
Ms. Martinez, thank you for your time. Patiently waiting. I appreciate it.
Thank you, commissioners. I do not envy any of you, what you're dealing with, and having to face all of us week after week after week. And I wonder if, after you go back and look at this meeting and listen to the peak insanity of the conversations that you're having, the solution, the very simple solution, whether you like it or not, is to throw off the dictatorial mandates of this bipolar governor. Pass a resolution, remove this county from a declaration, from, from a public health emergency, and tell the governor to kick rocks. Governor Sisalak, kick rocks. Read between the lines. This is insane. The concept of having to wear a mask and so, social distancing is a product of a 2006 science project conducted by a high schooler in Albuquerque. And it was based on computer modeling. It wasn't even based on actual physical science project modeling. It was on a computer model. And it's been held out as some kind of authoritative standard of how to prevent infection. And if me not wearing a mask and choosing to maintain a strong healthy immune system and declining to get the experimental gene therapy proffered by Moderna and Pfizer is endangering the lives of people in Washoe County, then why is it taking them so long to die? Because it's a lie. It's an abject lie. It's an abuse of power. Now, I know, Commissioner Herman, you get it. You're for liberty and freedom and for people. And, and you've even articulated it, Commissioner Hartung, about that we have the ability to analyze, assess, and take responsibility for our own, our own health and decisions. And I think somewhere deep in your heart, Chair Lucy, you are walking a fine line. I don't envy your job at all. And I've been a regulator. I know what it's like to be back in the back room, going over the regulations and the statutes and trying to find some congruence with the insanity of language that attorneys far removed have drafted for the rest of us to dance to their tune. So I'm asking this commission to be bold and strong, the three of you who are identified as Republicans, conservatives, I would assume for freedom and, and liberty, to be bold and vote against this. Vote no. Schedule a special meeting. Put a resolution on the agenda to remove us from the public health emergency and be done with it. And Mr. Solero, thank you for your work. I do not envy the job that you guys have had to do. It's absurd. It's absurd. And we're paying you good money to take care of other issues in the county. Thank you. Let me put on my submission indicator.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, there is nobody else signed in.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. So, Mr. Solero, we've taken quite a bit of discussion here and had some extensive understanding of where we go from here. I think that this time, you know, I don't know, is there any further discussion by the commissioners on this? Any, any comments? All right. I think where we're at is that we either endorse a plan and we don't. We move forward with the endorsed plan or don't. And if we move forward with the endorsed plan, it's something that we can present and edit. I would, I would proffer that any, in any, if there is a motion to move forward with the endorsed plan, that there is an opportunity to edit the plan, to just admire the governor's guidelines in Director, in Director 44. I would proffer that as a suggestion, that would take, 44 would take place on May 1st.
Mr. Chair, so would we, would we meet after May 1st? Because May 1st falls on a, on a weekend?
No, no, no.
So would we, would we meet on the 30th to discuss what would happen on the 1st? How would, how would we, it's just a question.
No, I don't.
Looking for some clarification.
I'm trying to think, I'm trying to think through how to, how to best explain it. Because of the new information provided in 44, it immediately changes the plan that's going to be in place on May 1st. I would say that we just accept the endorsed plan with the changes that would been submitted under Director 44. Then, then if we feel that the plan still isn't adequately addressing the needs of our, our county, we can come back and schedule a, a special meeting after May 1st to address any needs that aren't being addressed within the plan. So if that's, if that's relaxing or, or whatever, that can be addressed. But right now, based upon the presentation that's due on Thursday to the state task force, us in Clark County have to provide something. Or, to Mr. Solero's point, provide nothing and sit here.
Right.
And, and let the businesses fall to, you know, the governor's authority. Then, then that's where we sit. And I would say that there is no, we are not going to over, we're not going to govern the cities. We're not going to, we're, we're recommending, they're partners in this. They've, they've approved this. They feel comfortable with this. Bull Sparks in Reno, whether they're electeds have seen it or not, but based upon the powers vested to us from the governor, we are speaking on their behalf and need to continue to speak on their behalf with their best interest in mind as well. And that's how we play regional, which is what we play in this regional environment. And we've done a great job on it. We have been good partners with this, so I want to continue to do that and maintain those relationships. But this is something we have to do. So with that, I'm going to turn it over and look for a motion or some direction.
Before, before we do that, so Mr. Solero, just real quickly, just articulate, I, I know that, I know that they want to use a different, a different methodology, not just the hospital, hospitalizations. What else, what else is there? Is there anything else that's, that's of substance that I haven't picked up between the BCC revision that, that we voted on and approved four to one versus the endorsed plan?
Just wanted to take a quick, quick.
Mr. Manager, can you, any?
I think the masks, when you're at the gym.
Right. That's, that's.
Oh, the mask.
There's a difference.
Also, not having, we, we were saying that come June 1, if you had an event, you wouldn't have to govern, or the event promoter wouldn't have to govern the mask rule either. So those would be the two changes I saw.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. It's 1:00. I'd like to, I'd like to wrap this thing up. I think we, we beat this thing up enough. So I'm at this time looking for directions.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
All right. Commissioner Ehl.
I would like to move that the commission move forward with the endorsed plan with the changes from the most recent governor's directive. And also add hos, my understanding is we are under monitoring and adjustments. We are also adding hospitalizations to the, oh my gosh, aren't we adding it to monitoring and adjustments for the guidelines?
We are.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it currently lies within the COVID-19 meter, but it also, but it isn't the guiding principle for decisions based upon further restrictions.
So that the Truckee Meadows COVID risk meter and the sewer prevalence study data. And then staff, I understand, is also working on something with you and I on that. So adding, adding that language. That's my motion.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I will reluctantly second it, because I know we need to move something forward. And I, I look forward to just getting us, getting us back to a point where, where if the governor has mandates, let the governor have his mandates and, and let him enforce them and allow our businesses to reopen and, and, you know, sort of start to move forward and let people make their own decisions. Again, it's a reluctance, but call it what you will, but we have to submit something. So I, I recognize that part of the, the requirement.
Thank you, Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chair, real quick.
Yes.
The motion and the second were for approval of the endorsed plan as stated, and I won't go through all the details. Does that motion also include direction to staff to submit it to the task force? Because that's in the agenda as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the seconder as well?
Seconder, please.
Yes, of course, seconder.
Thank you.
All right.
I thought that was unsaid.
So, I'm going to make one final comment. As your chair, I promise that I will continue to work hard and diligently on this with the staff and make sure that this is very clear, because I've heard the concerns of all the public. I've heard the concerns and the emails and, and the frustrations. And I, along with you, and I will state this publicly, no longer want to wear this mask. I no longer want to adhere to a lot of these socialization issues. And because that bothers me, I, I'm a very social person and need to be around people. However, to get through this and to adhere and make sure that we can finalize and move out of this pandemic and let the law office, you know, law offices and attorneys and everybody decide whether or not we have authority or not under 414, that's a discussion I'm not even going to get involved in. But I will work hard to make sure that we can get through this as quickly as possible. So.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you. And, and one thing that I would like to note, even though some, some will see this as, you know, a sellout, even in a court of law, once a decision has been made, the only option is to appeal. This, I see this, I see this revision just like an appeal, because if you waive your right to appeal, it's done.
Yeah. So, all right. So we've got a motion and a second on the floor to approve the endorsed plan with the revised additions from Director 44 and submit this to the statewide task force with included definitions of hospitalizations under monitoring and adjustments. That is the motion. It's been seconded. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries with four and the affirmative and one and the opposition. And we are done with that. Thank you very much, Mr. Solero. I'll see you in your office after the meeting. All right. Item 10, Mr. Manager.
Item 10 is the discussion and direction to staff regarding legislation or legislative issues proposed by legislators by Washoe County, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, or by other entities permitted by the Nevada State Legislature to submit bill draft requests or such legislative issues as may be deemed by the chair or the board to be of critical significance to Washoe County.
All right. So just a brief update for those, everybody was provided with this last week's bills of interest packet. We have the deadline on the front. We did pass that first deadline, which was, it had to be passed out of the first house and have some passage or out of committee on the first. We did have a number of bills finally, finally die. And so those are listed in, from page 14 on. We kept them on there as bills to watch, but those bills are no longer been, have been removed because they didn't, they failed to meet the deadline of the first committee passage. And so with that, we have the bills that are on pages one through 13 that we are still monitoring. Some of our bills have passed that we've been watched and supported. They have passed out of committee and out of the, out of the floor. But we are working on a number of issues. There are, and the bills are on the back of your packet by the specific issue, if you are concerned with that. Are there any questions in regards to this, or have anything for the legislative session that you would like us to bring forward to the staff? Seeing none. All right. I think, I don't think we need any more direction on that today, so we won't take any action. Let's move to our final public comment of the day. Mr. Manager.
Public comment, item 11 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
All right. Madam Clerk, is there any final public comment?
I have nobody signed in.
All right. Is there anybody on Zoom? All right. We are on to item 12, closed public comment. And this is our commissioners and county managers announcements. Mr. Manager, do you have anything final that you'd like to add?
I just have one item, Mr. Chair, and that is, we have with us today our new CIO, Bzad Zamanian. He's sitting out in the audience. For those, I know all of you have not had a chance to meet him.
Bzad.
Standing over the, beside Nancy.
Hey, Bzad, how are you? Wave your hand. Come on down.
So I just wanted to point him out and give you a chance to say hello, if that's, but that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Bzad, yeah. Come on up. Just, just kind of tell us who you are. Introduce yourself.
Hi, everybody. Glad to be here. My name is Bzad Zamanian. I have a Bachelor of Science in Computer Information Systems from the Polytechnic University. I've done my MBA, executive MBA coursework at the University of California in Irvine. I am a certified government chief information officer with CGCIO designation, which is an eight-month program designed for current government IT directors, CIOs. I have over 25 years of experience in the field of information technology, serving public sector, private companies, Fortune 500. I'm very glad to be here. I'm very excited to work with you under your guidance and directions. I'm looking forward to work with everybody and hopefully to take a step forward in implementing technology for the county.
Bzad, and tell us what county you just, or what municipality you just came from.
Yes. I worked for the, for the City of Huntington Beach, one of the largest municipalities in Orange County, California, for about 17 years.
So a wealth of information. Well, welcome aboard. We're very happy to have you. I've spent some time with Mr. Zamanian. He's.
Thank you so much.
Very intelligent. Let me just tell you. Credentials longer than most people with you know. So thank you so much for coming and being.
So, so if I may, Mr. Chair, I lived in Fountain Valley, went to Fountain Valley High School, know Huntington Beach extremely well. Prefer to surf Newport, Commissioner Jung, not, not Huntington, but have surfed Huntington here lots of times. But that's, that's, those are, it's a wonderful place to hail from. So welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jung, I have you sign in next.
And I'm sorry to see that the Assistant County Manager Solero has left. I've been meaning to bring this up, and I just need somebody to make me feel better. Ditch maintenance. I have been on the steamboat ditch you little locals have kept for me all these years. And I have noticed these ditches are not clean, and I'm concerned for fire, but also all the de-
all the debris in it. If we get a flash flood, those ditches are going to fail all of us. So I just need to know who's in charge, where are we at on the maintenance through the whole region? Because what I learned for the short time I was on the flood project board, as well as Tamoa, we are all interconnected with the water flow. So one dirty ditch is a dirty ditch for the whole community. So I just need some help and some reassurance. I've seen it twice now, within a month of each other, the two times, and I, it just makes me nervous with the ditches, especially in those canyons where we know that the fire is such a big issue up in Collin. So I just, you don't need to do a presentation unless the rest of your commissioners want it, Mr. Brown, but just some sort of, can I sleep at night? Or what do we need to do to make sure I can sleep at night? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Jung. All right. One final statement, you know, I want to make sure also people understand that I definitely support individuals' right to liberty and, and, you know, this is not something that I don't want anyone to be confused that I'm sitting up here trying to overhold or trying to push government on anybody. That's never been my position, nor do I want to do that. I have been a man of little government in, for a long time, so I don't know where that has ever come from. But I assure you, this has not been fun nor entertaining to do, but I appreciate everybody willing to participate and help move this along so that we can get out of this situation. So with that being said, and nothing further, we adjourn. Thank you very much, everybody.